2008 Meeting of the City Council Redevelopment Agency of San Carlos. Could everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, with my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, and with that, we will move on to item number, well, not item number one, number two, changes to the order of the agenda. Any members of the public or staff, council, like to change the order of the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, the order stands. Number three, council communications and announcements. Councilmember Groca?
I have one that's not really official, but I did take my son, Daniel, to school today, and I just wanted to thank the San Carlos School District, at least at that one side, at Arundel School. Went very smooth. They had a special greeting program for parents as they came in and to drive through, drop their kids off. I was expecting a huge amount of traffic, and there was virtually none. It was very well-run, and I wanted to congratulate the school district on doing that effort to keep the place uncongested.
Very good. Councilmember Royce?
Yes, I had the opportunity Friday to go to one of our wonderful summer concerts in Burden Park on Friday night. Just want to remind everybody, the last chance will be this next Friday, from six to eight, Burden Park. It's a unique season because we haven't had the kids and the adults and everybody's together. The playground is closed, so, but it still works out well, and I hear E-ticket is playing Friday, so please come. It's free.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Ramon?
Mr. Mayor, I think our meeting schedule in September might be a little odd, so I wanted to put a plug in for the San Carlos Art and Wine Fair that's coming up in October. Volunteer positions, please go to Cheryl. Yes, okay, it was a good thumbs up, so we'd love to get volunteers to help. It's a premier event, and love all your help.
Mr. Mayor, Grisilli?
No announcements except Mr. Mayor, maybe perhaps you'd announce the things we had in previous meetings. That's all I had.
Yes, thank you. So, between six and seven, we'd add interviews tonight for the Planning Commission and for the Transportation and Circulation Commission. Council's decided to appoint Steve Sinfilippo to the Planning Commission and Peter Sepas, I think Sepas, anyway, to the Transportation and Circulation Commission. So, thank all the applicants for applying tonight, and we hope to see, we had a great set of volunteers tonight, and hopefully you guys will come back for another commission opening where we have them. Thank you very much. And with that, any other staff, any announcements or anything? Okay. We will go on to number four, which are presentations, and we have a recognition for the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce as a newly-certified green business in San Carlos. All right. Mr. Mora?
Thank you, mayors and members of council. As you know, since last summer, San Carlos is one of the first six cities to be part of the Bay Area Green Business Program for San Mateo County. We continue to be the leading agency in terms of certified businesses. At your meeting a couple months ago, we brought forward several more businesses, bringing the total of sixteen, and I'm proud tonight to say that we're going to add yet another business to our list, and this will be a recognition of the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce. We also have a representative tonight from Congressmember Jackie Speerstaff to make a presentation, so I'll invite Mayor Lewis to come down to make the presentation, Cheryl Palmer, Inc., and then after that, we'll ask Mr. Perkins to come forward as well.
Well, I'm not on there. Is it working? All right. I'll be here till about ten o'clock. Tell your friends. Don't forget to tip your bartenders and waiters tonight. Excuse me, no, just a little bit of fun. Give me a microphone or we're in trouble. It is with great pleasure, you know, the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce is recognized as one of the great organizations, one of the great chambers in the state, and that's indeed no small part to your effort, but also the great volunteers that you're able to attract and the non-volunteers you're able to attract. So, let me read a little bit about this, because in the proclamation, it sort of describes part of the process. And this is where the City of San Carlos is partnered with San Mateo County, PG&E, California Water Service, South Bayside Waste Management Authority, and the Bay Area Quality Management District to bring the Bay Area Green Business Program, which has certified over a thousand firms as green businesses to date. The Green Business Program is a successful partnership of the city, county, local utilities, and agencies that assist, recognize, and promote businesses and government agencies that operate voluntarily in a more environmentally friendly way. To be certified as a green business, participants and their firms must comply with all the regulations and meet standards for conserving resources, preventing pollution, minimizing waste, and helping businesses improve and implement green practices for their operations. It's not a light amount of effort that goes into these certifications. The Chamber has successfully completed the extensive green business checklist, review, and certification process, and is now certified green business operating in the City of San Carlos. So, now therefore be proclaimed by Brad Lewis, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, and the city, entire City Council, that the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce is hereby commended for being chosen as a green certified business dated this 25th day of August. Congratulations. And I can't, I'm going to hand it to you in a second, but we have a whole bunch of stuff. You get to speak last, because I've learned that's good policy. But I read the city one, because I think it's the most important, but we have some other luminary from the County Board of Supervisors, a certificate as well, from the California State Senate, from Joe Sumidian, and the State Senate, and California Legislature, from Ira Ruskin, and we have Bruce Perkins here, with Bruce, Brian Perkins, excuse me, on behalf of another luminary.
Congratulations on this. You know, my son's seventeen, he just got his SAT scores back, and it occurred to me, you just took your SAT and you got perfect eight hundreds. So, on behalf of Congress, on behalf, yeah, on behalf of Congress, on behalf of Congresswoman Jackie Speer, congratulations. You're my favorite Chamber of Commerce, as you might well recognize since I remember. Good going, Cheryl. We're very proud of you.
Thank you. I get to speak now. I just want to thank my staff, because they are the ones who really made this possible. They work hard and do all the recycling and buy recycled products, so thank you to my wonderful staff.
Again, thanks very much, Cheryl. It's my pleasure. All right. And with that, we'll move on to item number five, which is public comment. This is for persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda. I have no speaker slips for open public comment tonight. Does anybody forthcoming like to speak at this point? Great, we will move on to item number six. Item six is approval of consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action.
Easy for you to say.
Yeah, well, thank you. You've been waiting to do that ever since I got down there. Council?
Mr. Mayor, move for the approval of consent calendar, items six A through G.
I'll second that. Christine?
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Groca?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And we will move on to item number seven, which is reports to council. Our first one is item number seven A, which is a quarterly report on the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department Services. All right, Chief Doug Frye?
Mayor, thank you, and members of the council have attached to you, for you, some of the activities and accomplishments that we have been working on in the last quarter. Probably the most recognized thing that's happening is the amount of activity we've had in regards to strike team deployments of personnel to assist with all the Northern California fires that have been occurring since late May and from all of the lightning strikes that we had in June and into July. So, as my report shows, we have some 2,370 hours of personnel that were committed to assisting the state of California in all those activities, and currently, we have no one deployed, and everything is right where it needs to be. We've been working on some grants and some other things that go along with that. We've just recently received a $7,200 grant from Fireman's Fund that we'll be using for its disaster preparedness program, and the grant that we received last year for the fire engine, that piece of equipment has arrived, and we'll be placing that in service in the next few weeks. It's currently one of the fire stations getting outfitted with new hose and equipment and the like. The other one that we ordered should be along in just a couple of weeks. It's been in Denver. And then the last couple of things are recruitment. I've hired two new personnel, two new firefighters will begin next Monday in the Fire Academy. They'll be gone for sixteen weeks, and they'll graduate in mid to late December, and we'll be doing some promotional examinations in October, November, based on some anticipated retirements. And that concludes my report. If I have any questions you may have, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, chief. Council, questions? None. So, we're going to move on to item number seven B, which is also you.
Right, that's correct. Part of the strategic planning component that we dealt with earlier this year was for me to give you some options regarding some alternative staffing and scheduling for the Fire Department, and I've done that report for you, submitted several pages of different types of schedules, kind of talked a little bit about the history of the department, where we've gone, how we got to that point, and really only addressed two schedules along with that and the costs that are associated with those. The one schedule is certainly the current one that we use now, which is a 56-hour work week, but based on Fair Labor Standard Act, we actually have a 52-hour work week, and then from, and again, that's three shifts, that's our current schedule, that's how the department operates at this time. The other schedule I gave you is what's known as the Cal Fire Schedule or the Kelly Schedule, where that's a 72-hour work week, and as you could see by, based on the report, that there, it really, it does reduce some of our staffing, not significant, but it does reduce it a little bit, and, but the overtime cost outweighs the cost to really moving in that direction. We have to pay our personnel an additional 19 hours per week per person in overtime costs, because the law states that anything over for our particular work schedule, anything above 52 hours, we need to pay overtime for those additional hours worked. So, with a 72-hour work week, the overtime for all the personnel within the department would average about 700 hours a week, 37,000 hours a year, some $1.4 million to pay just the overtime component that would fall into that piece. It would, like I said, it would reduce some of the staffing, but it is an option that nonetheless we could look at. As far as in our office and the day personnel, as I've stated in the report, we have done a number of different items in regards to that. Some of our non-safety, non-swarm positions, we've made those civilian positions, and they fall under a different retirement package, and they're, they're not part of the safety members of the organization, and we've begun to start sharing some positions. We share a training officer with the City Redwood City and the Woodside Fire Protection District, as well as an EMS chief that assists us with paramedic recertification of our members from Woodside and Redwood City. So, we're starting to really look at more of those things. I'm in early discussions now with Redwood City about potentially in the future, sharing fire investigation services, and so we're constantly looking at ways to cut corners. The constant staffing report that's attached with this was given to the Fire Commission last year, and explains the overtime piece in regards to our day-to-day staffing and how the department operates at this time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about that information.
Thank you, chief. Councilmembers, questions for chief?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. This is related to, not specifically to the scheduling, but I was looking at the July 9th meeting minutes where you requested the authorization to overhire, and we had a conversation earlier today where we talked about hiring in anticipation of some vacancies. Can you just briefly explain sort of the length of time it takes to hire somebody in the Fire Department and what that means?
Sure. We started the hiring process back in March, and we begin that with allowing some time to have personnel submit their applications either in person, or we do use an operation through the California Ops, which is where they can go online and file an application. The requirements for firefighter for this agency particularly, depending upon what we're hiring at the time, at a minimum is to be EMT certified, firefighter one certified, and then they need to take a bunch of manipulative tests. We accept what's called CPAP, which is a testing process for the physical agility component. There's only two places in California that do that twice a year. One's in Dublin, and the other's in Southern California, and they need to come to us and give us all the things that they need to do. We started this, as I stated, in March. Then we go through the written test, the interviews with all the members in the department, and then a couple of months after that, they get sent to me, and then we begin the background checks, psychological checks, medical component. It's about a six-month process. We started in March. I just gave the conditional job offers in mid-July for, and I just last week, we gave them unconditional, so we're just a couple of weeks before the academy that they're ready to go. As early as you start, it's not, doesn't seem like it's, it seems to get stretched out a little more every time. We started, in my report, I talk about, we started with 72 people, this last testing process. Of that 60 people, their applications were accepted, and only 34 showed up for the written exam. You know, there's 26 people out there that either got jobs somewhere else or decided that they didn't really want to come here, and that worked down to 19 people that we ended up interviewing, and my crew sent me a handful to interview, at which point, you know, I go through that process and bring them on board, and it's very critical and important, based on the restructure of the department, that we, you know, we're bringing on quality, quality members to the community, and that we want to put people in here that are going to be making commitment to the City of San Carlos and the Belmont Fire Protection District and are willing to spend some time here, and I think we're seeing the fruits of that labor, of those people coming in and really seeing some good quality people come into the organization. In spite of everything that went on over the last few years, we only did lose one person through that whole process of the restructuring of the department, and I give that a lot of credit to people that really wanted to be here and wanted to see this organization be successful.
Other questions for the chief? Councilmember Groca?
I'd rather the last.
Okay. Councilmember Royce?
Yes. So, the Fire Chief and I actually spent some time today. There were a lot of numbers and analysis, and I had a real tough time following this through, and of course, I will admit, I'm not knowledgeable about fire. I know we have two of our council members that are on the board know quite a bit, so I'd like to share a few things and get input from them, but my assessment in going through the numbers, and I used, without getting into detail, a few different viewpoints of our costs, but I do agree with the chief, our balance of whether or not we hire, and this analysis looks at scheduling differently and hiring additional firefighters to cover overhead, or do we have our existing firefighters do the overhead? And when I went through the analysis, and I'll share this with Doug later, it's actually pretty close. It's actually, what we're doing is pretty well in the ballpark, and of course, even though with overtime, we're paying time and a half, we're, by having paid existing firefighters, we're not repaying a lot of the PERS and medical insurance and some of the fixed costs, where if you bring new people onboard, those costs, even though there could be lower salaries and so forth, you're paying a lot more. So, overall, I'm comfortable with the report. The initiation of the report, though, was scheduling, and I took a different avenue of looking at it, just trying to think about, again, our goals are to provide, you know, the best service, have the best firefighters, good response times, you know, have a safe town, have coverage throughout our town, and one of the things I'd like to get input from council here and also from you, the Fire Chief, is we do have a lot of information on the web. There's a site called firedispatch.com. If you ever hear a siren, you could go on and get real live data of what's going on where and so forth. And I picked this past week, and then I went back to February, pretty consistent data, but one of the things that came out is, of course, one was that medical calls, of course, are quite high as a percentage. We know that. I think longer term, we need to address medical versus fire, and if there's any opportunities and efficiencies. But regarding scheduling, the main point that came out was that, and I looked at, I started with our, our current shift starts at 8:00 AM. So, I went eight to eight, which I would call a day shift, and then from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, which I'll call grave, I guess, from this point of discussion, and about, pretty consistently, about 70% of the volume of calls are, of course, during the day, and 30% during the night, and so when you look at 30/70, you're getting more than, in two times as much during the day. We basically staff at minimal staffing levels equally. We're staffing every day, 24 hours a day, for seven days a week, and yet, the business model, the customer, the demand is more than twice as much. And I don't have firm numbers, but a lot of that volume in the grave is actually from 8:00 PM till 12 o'clock at night. There's, there's very little activity. There's some false alarms in the early hours from 12 o'clock, midnight, to 8:00 AM, but we're equally staffing our stations equally 24 hours a day. So, what I would like is to look at, is there a way, if we are at 80/20 with those day and night, you know, if you have a, you could have a 16-hour shift and an eight-hour shift, or a 12-hour and a 12-hour, are there ways to match the business need, the demand from our customers who are making those calls, to have higher staffing and better staffing during when the activity occurs, and lower staffing in the wee hours of the evening? Now, I know the initial answer is there's a minimal level that we need. I agree, we need a minimal level, but looking at, again, types of calls and mixed, but just sheer volume, 80/20, you have four times as many calls, but we're staffing equally 50/50. To me, that's not a business model that most, you know, companies look at. They look at staffing up when their customers need the demand, and yet, we need to be ready. When that fire house burns at 3:00 AM, we need to be prepared to fight a fire. So, I really appreciate all the things that you go through for scheduling, but somehow I would like to look at that as far as matching need to staffing somehow.
But with, respond to that also?
Well, I'd like to get some, take a look at that data and get back with some of that information, but I do know, for example, you know, the county contract with the paramedic provider, AMR, does a similar business model. They've looked at their call volume, and they upstaff additional ambulances during their peak times, and they downstaff during their non-peak times. The difference is, is they're just doing that component of medical response, where we're doing more of an all-risk piece that is available for the community. So, I would like to get a little bit more information on that and respond back to my next meeting, possibly.
Okay. Great. In fact, I'll share this data with you. You could have that. Anything else you guys could? Councilmember Groca?
Before I get to, just, I had one question or comment that I wanted to get into a little bit, but before I do that, just, I wanted to segue off of Mr. Royce's comment. Can you speak, chief, to some of the things that firefighters do during their shift? You know, they're on for a 24-hour shift, and so during that time, as Mr. Royce has pointed out, there might be times during their shift where they're really busy outrunning calls and so forth. Like I know from talking to the guy sometimes, it always seems to come at dinnertime when they're trying to have their meal, but other things that happen while they're on duty during the day that they're responsible for, do they try to, you know, are there things that they're about when they know they have a more quiet time during their, during their time on duty?
I think they know, you know, we try and schedule everything as much as we can, with the exception of the emergencies or the responses that come in play, but we try and allow the officers of each of the station to kind of plan their day, but there is a minimum of two to four hours per day of mandated training that they need to do. They need to do station maintenance, they need to check the equipment and make sure it's operational. A couple of times a month, we do full inventories on all the equipment and run all of the power equipment. We have 11 people currently on probation, so there's a significant amount of probationary training and testing that occurs every day. The, you know, we maintain the facilities inside and out ourselves as far as cleaning them, doing laundry. There's safety inspections that need to be done. We do joint training with Redwood City, Woodside, Menlo Park, Foster City, so there's travel time to get to those locations. There's county components for the mandates for paramedic training, that they need to maintain their skill level 24 hours a year for paramedic training, 24 hours a year for EMTs. There's roughly 48 hours a year that we spend doing hazardous materials response team training. Their schedules fill up pretty fast, and then we throw the emergencies and move and covers and all those other things, company inspections, all those things that fall into play, apartment buildings, pre-plans. Their schedule's pretty full. They have a fair, not a lot of downtime, and usually, their downtime, it kind of falls on the weekend. That's when they kind of do the things that they've set aside, because it's quieter. You know, as Mr. Roy said, you know, there's a lot of people that come into these two communities during the workday, during the week, and, you know, for obvious reasons, that's when the majority of our activity is. And so, you know, on the weekends, it's a little bit quieter, but we're also involved in the community piece that falls on the weekends, like the art and wine festivals, the downtown shows, the Burden Park hometown days, those types of things, so, and then we're doing shirt training with the disaster preparedness. Several of those classes are falling on the weekends or in the evenings, in which we ask some of the fire crews to do some of that training.
Thanks. Any more questions on the report?
Yeah, just a couple more. I know we want to get through this, but, and then if we do get into looking at some kind of other breakdown, I suppose also, in terms of demand, there's seasonal demands, like you talked in your report about our guys being taken away to work for the state, and so you have that, and then I'm aware that in the wintertime, we have floods and so forth, and your equi, your pieces of equipment and your personnel report to situations like that as well in the wintertime.
Correct. We, you know, that's one, I talked earlier about the Fire Department being an all-risk department. We're really the first line that people call and contact us for assistance. When we had some of the serious rains back in January, for a department that normally runs maybe 10 or 15 calls a day, we had 35 calls just out of Station 13. We had 87 calls throughout the entire department in an eight-hour window. Those types of days are few and far between, but we do have them, and we will have those types of days inevitably back to back to back, to where we will have multiple calls come in at the same time, units of dispatch are coming from all different directions. It could be significant. We do have those while then in summertime.
Then, the last comment or question I have is, I took a great interest in the rotating schedule, which I'd always heard of. I've talked to the guys about it, and they've told me how it works, but I've never actually seen it as a graphic, and what occurred to me looking at this is just a question. I haven't tried to noodle with it myself, but, you know, I understand that this is something that the industry's come up with and probably, you know, some great minds put this together, and then there's the other that you presented to us, which you've shown the overtime on it, just, you know, overwhelm, would overwhelm us, and so we probably can't look at the Kelly model. But it did bring to mind, you know, this is basically a matrix, a mathematical puzzle, if you will, and I just wonder if there's not perhaps even some other way to look at it, where even if we were to throw in, you know, we've talked about cross-staffing or having a partial fifth company so that we can somehow get a situation where we have water downtown, and we can still run the truck, and we could also get away perhaps of running the truck over to the Elms for emergency medical calls, and I'm still interested in that, and I don't know if there's some other way to look at this matrix to try and create that, and at the same time, either maintain costs or possibly even save some money, but do something else where we can maintain the cost and yet get for our community what it is we really need.
Well, and part of that was, if you look in the Kelly schedule rotation, that particular schedule of reducing your nine people that you have for company, reducing it, say, down to seven and a half, which is how they operate that, only works in clusters of three. So, if you have three companies, it works great. You have six companies, it works great. You get into the odd four, five, seven, then you have to look at some other alternative scheduling piece, or you have increased the personnel to offset that, that cost of where you're going to have the people at.
I suppose what I'm, I'm not really looking at the Kelly model at all, but what I'm thinking is, you know, we have a unique community with a unique setup with Belmont and, you know, our equipment, and I'm just really curious if there's, you know, somebody who couldn't look at this matrix and say, you know, possibly we could add a few staff to where, speaking to Mr. Royce's comment, you know, maybe we look at, we actually add a few firefighters who are paramedics, who we can, where we can run the truck at certain times where who we can, where we can run the truck at certain times where it's more likely we're going to need it. And at other times, we pretty much consider that we're not going to be running the truck. We're going to run two engines, or out of, or an engine, excuse me, out of Station 13. And because of the likelihood of the types of calls we're going to get, and we mix up the personnel and the scheduling. I know something like that might be a burden on you, and it might be a burden on the firefighters themselves. But we, again, we have a unique community, we have unique needs. And I think what we'd all really like to see is somehow getting away from running the wheels off that truck, just go over to the Elms for a medical call, and also somehow getting water downtown so that when, you know, God forbid, something happens, and we could really use the water downtown, we've got it.
If I could get a little bit of time on that, too. Maybe I'll respond to both of those at the next quarter when we get together, and I can have that.
That's what I was going to suggest. That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. We have one public speaker that will come up. Chief, thank you very much for your report tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Pat Bell?
Hi, Pat Bell, San Carlos. Um, there's more to this than money, and there's certainly more to overtime than money. Our firefighters stuck with us for years under horrible circumstances, working horrible long hours. And I just don't want to do that to them again, even if it did save money, or even if it were a wash. We went through a long, long process to get this fire department back on track. And Mr. Grisilli and Mr. Grokot put in many, many, many hours. And this department has been looked at long and hard by very smart people. And I would hesitate to upend it because some chart says you could save money by paying overtime. That doesn't make sense in the long run. We have, we owe our firefighters decent working conditions. We're relying on them to save our lives and our homes. And it's just not fair to ask them to work, you know, the kind of overtime that they would have to work. And during this forest fire season, they have done the same thing. We had one battalion chief, there are three battalion chiefs. We had one who worked for something like 13 days until Chief Frye came in and took one of his, part of one shift because the, you know, Mike was out at a fire. So you have to think about the personnel. Chief Frye has done an excellent job. Mr. Grisilli, Mr. Grokot helped to set it up so that the finances are sound. And Chief Frye has done an excellent job of whittling away. But we can't forget the people who do the work.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. And again, thank you, Chief, for a good report tonight. Appreciate that. We're going to move on to item number 8A, which is a public hearing. And it's an appeal of a planning commission decision. Staff? Thank you, Mrs. Nelson.
I have to get, good evening, I'm Deborah Nelson, the planning manager. This evening is the consideration of an appeal of a use which is proposed to occupy 852 Laurel Street. This item was heard by the zoning administrator, and then appealed to the planning commission, and now appealed to you. The project site is 852 Laurel, it's there in the middle in red. Also noted on the site above it, on the left top corner, is the market, which will become Bianchini's this winter. South Plaza on the left in the middle, and the location of the business owner's business, which submitted the appeal, Harmony Yogurt at 1226 Arroyo. The zoning administrator approved this use. There's two factors, which I'll get into as we go through the report, but there were two factors that needed zoning administrator approval. That for a retail food sales establishment where there's a larger public area than the code requires, allows, and for a parking exception, basically for the building itself, but primarily for this use. Red Mango is the use proposed in a 4,000-square-foot building. It is a frozen yogurt retail sales store. The business, the other co-tenants are Starbucks and Good Sage, which is a home decor business. The code has a provision that this kind of food sales, different than, say, a white tablecloth restaurant, has a prohibition or a maximum amount of the common area for which the sale of the food occurs. And that is 30%. If it's proposed to be more than that, then there is an exception process. So in this case, it is 5% over what's required, or 360 square feet of the space. And then there is a, as part of the proposal, the architect proposes to take off the front of the building and actually create a patio, which is not on the public sidewalk. We do encourage outdoor dining on our public sidewalk. In this case, it would be off the public sidewalk. That's not included in our calculation of this food sales space, but we did include it just to be conservative in our calculation of what the parking requirement would be. So the unusual thing about this application is that, were it not for these two factors, it could be approved with a business registration. Somebody could come in for a vacant space, and if it met all of the zoning code specifics, that use could go in. So as I mentioned, one of the triggers was this extra 5% square footage of public area for eating and serving, and the parking exception. And the parking exception actually was only triggered because the site was vacant for more than six months. We, we have a determination of the parking requirements for all the buildings in the downtown that was done in 1987 with the Parking Assessment District. And basically, every property paid in to its share of a parking plaza. This particular building has an allocation of five spaces. If you put the parking requirement in our code, say if this were out of a parking plaza area, it would require eight spaces, so it's three spaces shy. You then need a parking exception for those additional three spaces. The other awkwardness is, the other two uses in this 4,000-square-foot building already occupy the requirement for the five spaces. So it's an unusual one. We would prefer that the code actually didn't have to have any exceptions that were required with this particular use. The basis of the appeal by the owners at Harmony Yogurt is the parking, is the tenant's space already has a parking deficit, and that Red Mango, by virtue of its sort of national sales, is conducting a high-traffic operation. That the economic development plan offers a redundant food sales, that Red Mango is not consistent with the economic development plan because it's a redundant food sales use, and it would not attract any additional shoppers. And then there's also a request that the fee for the planning commission appeal not be applied. This, again, illustrates that there, that the building itself has a five-space equivalency. Eight spaces are needed based on the uses that are in the building, and that there are three-spaces deficit. I should note that although the calculation in this particular block was based on buying into the South Plaza Assessment District, South Plaza is our most vacant on a regular basis. And in 1999, a study of that particular plaza in conjunction with what might happen in the future there, concluded that there's plenty of additional room, even if the market is fully occupied, plenty of additional room in the South Plaza for retail uses in the downtown. The economic development plan has objectives to draw people from the Al Camino to the downtown. And it also suggests that we add walkability and economic vitality. Another factor was that there was a downtown retail advisory committee that the council had in place that actually suggested that we go look for this first wave of national change, that that's really an indicator that there's a willingness to invest in downtown San Carlos. And Starbucks in the same building was an example of that, of the first wave of the national retail chains. It can coexist with other privately-owned, similar kinds of uses, as Red Mango is, to other frozen confections downtown. And then also last, this past winter and last year, when we looked at the changes that might be made to the downtown CR district relative to use permits, this council and EDAC and the planning commission suggested that we want to make things easier in the downtown, not have a lot of use permits, let the market decide. And so when reviewing this application, the zoning administrator and the planning commission considered that, were it not for these requirements of the code, this kind of use is letting the market decide what can exist in that building. Regarding the appeal fees by your policy, fees are a fee for service provided. The hearing did happen before the planning commission. It is a fee that pays for that expense. So it's not typical that we refund fees. During both hearings, public comment was received from the appellants of owners of Harmony Frozen Yogurt, CNL Hair Salon, who owns the building next door, and also the building that occupies Harmony Frozen Yogurt, and the skinny sipping business owner. The planning commission and the zoning administrator made two findings. The first finding was relative to the zoning ordinance, which is a finding that this use will not be detrimental to public health, peace, safety, comfort, general welfare, or convenience. And also a finding related to the general plan, that this business, this use, is located and conducted in a manner which is consistent with the general plan. And both those findings could be made. So it is the recommendation that the city council deny the appeal and uphold the decision of both the planning commission and the zoning administrator, and allow this use with its exception for its public space and the associated parking use permit. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Counselor, do you have questions for staff on the report? I do have some, it's a public hearing, I have some public speakers for this item as well. But let's go ahead and ask questions of staff. As well, Grokot?
The first one is, you know, it seems rather obvious, but I'm not sure if there's an answer. And that is, why the 30% requirement? What is it, what's the intent of that 30% requirement? And because, and the reason I ask it, obviously, is they're over it, and this was part of the appeal, is...
I think it's probably a holdover from fast food, and the council's consideration of fast food establishments in the downtown, and your interest in not having too many of them, similar to your not, your interest in not having too many banks on corners. Since, and what we do sometimes is not get rid of an old model when we put in place a new model. And just a couple of years ago, the new model you put in place was to reduce the parking requirement for white tablecloth restaurants. So if this were a white tablecloth restaurant, this would not be the issue.
So you mean by fast food is...
Fast food is consume it either on the premises or take it out. So retail food sales are those where you can make the purchase, eat it there, or take it out. It could be a deli, it could be frozen.
So what you're saying, though, is that fast foods generally required less prep area, and could therefore have more seating area?
Right.
And so what we were trying to do by this 30% rule was prevent, without saying, McDonald's, you can't come here, Burger King, you can't come here. We were trying to look for thresholds that would just keep them out?
Correct, correct. And a parking threshold was really the result of that.
Okay. And then you said that the two businesses that are already in that building really take up the parking allotment for that total building, the five spaces?
Correct. And because it's a 4,000-square-foot building, one space for 500 square feet would be eight spaces. But then when we calculate each of those uses by their square footage, one needs three, and the other one needs two. So they already have the five spaces that were purchased in the Parking Assessment District in 1987. I personally think this is one of the ones, when you adopted the economic development plan, and there was a part in that plan that said, look at the codes for places that don't get us to where we want to be, that another study of parking and ultimate build-out in the downtown is probably something we should put on the list when we get the time.
And then the last thing was, I didn't understand what you were saying about, I understood what you're saying, that the architect already has a plan to push the storefront back a little bit to create some outdoor dining.
Yes.
And that square footage was not included in the 35%?
Yeah, because we don't. Another, maybe inconsistency in our, in our code. I mean, space for dining is space for dining, whether it's inside or out.
So if we went with the actual front parapet, which is, defines the front of the building, and then included that square footage of seating into the formula, we'd be, what, at 40% or what?
Probably over 40%. It adds another 206 square feet.
And then my last question is, if we approve this, you know, it gets down to sort of a philosophical question because we're, we're not, you know, it's been said, we're not a nation of men. We're a nation of laws, meaning we, we set the law, and then everybody's expected to abide by them, and that's the way we live. We don't live on a case-by-case basis. We set standards, and we live by them. And whether they're fair or not fair, we don't like them, or we do like them, that's what it is. So I'm trying to get to the philosophical question a little bit of, this other yogurt company came in, and they played by the rules, met all the requirements, apparently, because I don't think they made any, you know, special applications. So where does that leave them, or anybody else that comes along later? Who, do they just go through this appeal process and pay all the fees? What do these guys do? Do they redesign their building in order to compete with Red Mango? Because Red Mango, we gave certain allowances to? What do we do? What would staff recommend we do?
I think there's a factor related to that. Maybe the Kaufmans can talk a little more about it. But there was no six-month vacancy in the site that they're currently in. So if there was a parking deficit for their use, it was a business registration approval. It's a kind of use that's allowed. They were less than 30% or at 30% for the public area. And we did not trigger this parking exception because we say, uses can move in. If there's, if there's a discrepancy, as long as it's not vacant more than six months, a new use can move in.
So that speaks to the parking issue, and I understand that. But how do we deal with, for instance, the floor area? Because I'm just thinking, I don't want to get, you know, too much into the details of different businesses. But I do know with this yogurt shop that is the applicant, the applicant of the appeal, you know, they're on a side street, there's not the width of the sidewalk like you have on Laurel Street. So they're limited there in terms of outdoor dining. And by playing by the rules and accepting the 30%, they also have a pretty small area inside their store. And it just seems to me, you know, I'm really struggling with, you play by the rules, you don't play by the rules. You've got two businesses now that you're going to send out into the real world, you know, the market that you talked about, and tell them, go ahead and compete. But one played by certain rules, and one is applied. And, you know, obviously, they're going to go through the expense and so forth to have different rules applied, and yet we're telling them, go out into the market and compete. I'm just struggling with that. Maybe the city attorney might want... Maybe the city attorney might want to have some input on this as well.
Just to say, we could ask them to redesign and meet the 30%, and then they would not be asking for that exception. So I think it's the balance that we grapple with. You make a good point. Does that, does by making the outdoor space and the additional space inside add to the economic vitality of the downtown? And could that be an exception, an exception that would want to be approved? The zoning administrator and the planning commission thought yes.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
I would just comment, please, Mayor, that yes, in the zoning code, we have rules that set the zoning standards for different zoning districts, but we also have things in the zoning codes such as variances and exceptions. They're built in for you to make a discretionary call. So they're part of the rules, too. And I think we've gone to those, those things, variances and exceptions for businesses along Laurel Street, up and down, from south to north end of Laurel Street, before. It's not unusual.
Thank you. Councilor Ramad?
Yeah. Ms. Nelson, I guess I was a little confused. So there's, let me just try to get this from somebody who's not been on planning commission. The trigger for the exception for parking is a result of the 30 versus 35% for retailer area. Am I correct in that assumption?
There's actually two, yeah. The exception is that common space is greater than 30%.
Okay.
We actually have a use permit for the parking, and that's triggered because the, it's now a non-conforming parking situation created by a part of the code that says if a space is vacant for six months or longer.
Got it. So I guess the follow-up question is, is there any kind of business that could move into this empty space and not need any additional parking?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. It would apply to any use of that space.
Randy? Councilor? Okay.
Well, Ms. Nelson, a couple of things. First of all, how much is the appeal to the planning commission? How much was it?
Fourteen, 1,200, 1,293.
Okay. Is there any appeal, is there any appeal to this body?
Same.
Is there any appeal to this body?
Yes. Same, same.
So it's 1,293 twice?
Right.
So we're talking...
1,500.
Okay. But the applicant, the appellant, rather, is only asking for a waiver of the 1,293?
Yes.
All right. So 1,293 and 1,500. Just asking so it's out there. As Councilor Ramad asked the question, I mean, in effect, if this property didn't have the six-month vacancy, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Correct.
So that's really, I mean, in my opinion, not, because I'm not as technical as you are, because you deal with more than 30% and 35%, and I'm just looking at, six months was the key thing that triggered this, otherwise we would, if that property had had tenants in it, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
And that they had, the designer was willing to make it a 30%.
Okay, so it's, it's both?
It's both.
Either one?
It's both.
So it's, but it's, some of the words...
Either one would have triggered it.
Triggered it. Either one. Just want to make sure. So either one would have triggered it. Now, there's a, there's a taqueria that closed down the street, a few doors away. It's going to be another restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
What are we going to face there? No parking issue? Is there a parking issue there?
And then within six months, no parking issue.
So it's just going to fly through, doesn't have, now the 30, 35% rule, would that come into play?
No, because that one's a restaurant, not a, a retail food service.
Retail food service is not a restaurant?
Correct. Because it's more, there's not a, there's not the degree of preparation.
There's not the degree of, you're, you're going to lose me here, because...
It is, and as I said, it probably came from when the code was put in place to address, if you had too many delis or too many fast foods...
All right. So we could go to the nth degree to define fast food and define all the rest of it. I don't want to do that. Okay. It would seem to me that the B and Kinnies folks would, are going to be impacted by more than, than anything else on this, on all the businesses that are there. Starbucks, Good Sage, and assuming or not assuming this restaurant, or this facility opens. I mean, I'm just saying from intuitively, right now, they haven't been using their parking facility.
Well, there are a number of vacant spaces. The Chamber does monitor an employee parking permit system, and we've been talking with Kevin B. and Kinnie about, let's get those permits for your employees so that they've got a place to park. And then the market itself has some of its own parking on site.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, if I ran the market, I'd sure like to have all the spaces in front for me.
Right, yeah.
I think what's going to happen is, they're not going to have all those spaces for themselves, because people are going to Starbucks, or Good Sage, or if this Red Mango opens, people are going to park in their lot.
Mm-hmm.
But B and Kinnies isn't here. They're not, they haven't brought up this issue, they feel it's just, apparently, they haven't, they haven't brought it up.
Markets often like to have their own standalone parking, that they would prefer that in their other site. They have shared parking. What's typical in a downtown is a trip was...
Oh, that's okay. They aren't here. I was just saying, they haven't come to you, and they haven't complained?
Nope.
That people are going to take their spots, and they have already, and they will be in the future, in my opinion, taking it.
Right. No, they haven't complained.
Those are the only questions I have, Mr. Ramad.
Thank you. Just a couple of small ones. There's been some good questions already. The, so right now, the code doesn't provide for if we move the threshold back and add seating, that's not counted against the percentage. Is that true?
That's true.
So number one, that's probably something we should anticipate, given the fact that that's an architectural trend across every city in the last five to 10 years, I think.
Yes.
I mean, if, if that component of the law is something that's of concern from the past, we should probably take a harder look at that down the road here. Does, does this decision open us up to, I don't know the seating percentages in other fast food restaurants, but it makes sense to me that we would have a threshold there because we don't want a proliferation of one type of fast food, you know, retail services downtown. So does this open us up to, are the decisions down the road, other types of businesses that may, in other words, if it's 45%, I'm not sure, without counting it, we don't have exact percentages, is this going to open us up to that down the road?
Actually, I did. It's 46. You're close.
It's 46%.
46%. You certainly can require it to be different. And the architect may be able to answer questions that you have specifically about that number of seats and...
Okay. Good. I appreciate that. With that, I think we'll, it's a public hearing, we'll take some public comment, and then we'll have further discussion. I only have three slips at this point in time. If anybody else would like to speak, you're certainly welcome to, and you can fill out a slip afterwards. First, we have Ziden Jones. And if you could just give us your city residence, and then each speaker has two minutes.
My name is Eden Jones. I live in Rapid City. I'm the architect for Red Mango. Originally, I started working on this project back in December. I was referred to the project by the property owner. Actually, I've worked on a couple of other ideas that wanted to go in that space, but it never quite worked out, it wasn't able to make it work, economics or whatnot. This space has been vacant for at least 18 months that I know of. And again, like I said, I started working on it in December, I've worked with pretty much every planner on staff, and they've always been supportive. Again, we went through all the code and whatnot to make sure the, what was allowed and what wasn't allowed, and just, my understanding of the 30% for retail food was just a definition. It wasn't a rule, but it was a definition. So again, when we realized we needed to get the parking exception, because this space had been vacant for so long, that's when we looked at, how can we make this space attractive? And we considered the recessing of storefront, one, so that we can make the space accessible for wheelchairs. Also, as we walk up and down Laurel Street, we noticed that a lot of restaurants do that. So again, we wanted to have a welcoming environment for those that patronize that street. So again, it has been a fun project. Everyone in staff has been supportive. And again, I appreciate that it's not about closeness or proximity. If I were to pace it over to Harmony, it's about 350 steps, 350 feet, if you walk that distance. But again, in my life, when I come to San Carlos, and we do so on a weekly basis, if not more so, we always go to Laurel Street. And I had to apologize when we had the zoning administrating hearing, I had never heard of Harmony, again, because they're on Arroyo, and they're around the corner. And as I talked with my wife about, hey, what happens when Red Mango opens, she always laughs at me, because she doesn't like tart yogurt. So she reminds me we're probably going to Skinny Sipping, because she prefers sweet yogurt. So again, I appreciate there's opportunity here for different choices for the consumer, and that all can thrive economically here because of the economic plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Chu?
Hi, for the record, I'm Richard Chu of Melon Park. I won't speak to the semantics, everything, I just will talk to, I mean, from my own personal. We've been colored as corporations throughout all this, and to be quite frank...
Could you speak up a little bit?
Yeah.
I'm having difficulty hearing.
We've been colored as a corporation and a big franchise in this retail service business that comes in, but what it really is, is just a partnership between good friends, between me, Yul, and a friend, Mark. For us, we've been trying to make it so that it actually helps with the economic vitality of the downtown. I think that for us, when we're just pacing around Laurel Street, we see that it tends to die off on the Arroyo side. So we wanted to make sure that we created a good environment for kids to come and hang out, and that's part of the reason why we wanted to push it back a bit, is when Mark, who's in full seniority here because of a family situation, we came by, we said, we wanted to create a safe haven for, for kids that play in the area, and we haven't seen that here yet. So especially for the people that are in University Avenue that come by the other store that we have, they say, you know, thank you for coming to San Carlos, you're actually bringing a good product, it's not like some other fast food where it's burgers and fries, you guys are actually doing something good for the community and creating a safe place for them to, to be in. And so that's why this is coming about. So, you know, we've put a lot on the line on this project as well. I've, I've had my family help by mortgaging their house, and so I've got everything that I have in this project, and so I just ask you to consider all the options when here in this case.
Thank you. And Yul Kwan?
Good evening, council members. My name is Yul Kwan. I live in San Mateo. I appreciate the opportunity to address council. Just to give a little bit of color, I mean, as Richard indicated, we're not a big corporation. Basically, it's me and two other partners. This is the first time any of us have tried to do any kind of restaurant or retail business. So we're going to this for the first time, and we have one other store open. It's been doing pretty well in downtown Palo Alto, and so we've looked at this as an opportunity to try and do what we were able to do in downtown Palo Alto, which is really drive a lot more foot traffic to one side of the street, a part of the community that hadn't had a lot of foot traffic in the past. I just would like to respectfully request that this council limit its consideration to the specific issues that were, on which this application was based, which is, again, the parking issue and the issue with respect to the percentage of public space in the store. We applied for these exceptions because we needed approval from the zoning administrator on these two narrow issues. The issue with respect to the percentage of public space, as I understand it, has not been raised on appeal, and so I believe that that issue is more or less moot. With respect to parking, you know, every decision-maker who's reviewed this issue has found that parking would not be an issue. To help resolve this matter, we actually commissioned a third-party study that went out there and did traffic counts and stayed out there to see whether parking could potentially be an issue. And they found out that there was plenty of parking in that entire space, and it was rarely even approached, doing anything to be, you know, partly to capacity. The question of whether letting a frozen yogurt store open in the same vicinity as an existing one, and whether that would comport with the economic plan or the municipal code, was something that was raised on appeal and that we feel was shoehorned into this matter. Because this wouldn't even have come up, again, if we had been able to open in the space within six months of the prior tenant, you know, this is something that only came up because this issue regarding parking and the percentage of space had been triggered. Now, even if you were to consider the purpose of the plan of the code, we feel that our food use would be consistent. The code explicitly states that retail food use is something that's permitted in this area. We did what any other business owner would do.
I'm going to have to try to conclude your comments, please.
Okay, all right. We did, to address your point, Councilor, we did what every business owner would do. We read the code. The code said the retail food use is permitted. There are a number of restricted food, restricted spaces or categories such as personal services, and this was not listed as one of them. So we played by the rules, we went to the planning staff, we asked them...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're going to have to conclude. That's over to you.
All right. Again, basically, my point is, I would hope that the council would try to limit its discussion to the issues at hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramad. Do you have questions of the people who spoke?
Not right now. Let's not do that right now. Thanks. Any other speaker to the public hearing?
I think we have one coming over here.
Hello? Take your time. That's all right. You don't have to rush up.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so I'm Previn Naitu. I'm a member of the Youth Advisory Council. Sorry, I didn't come up earlier. But I feel that kids in San Carlos, we really don't need another place to have a safe haven. We really need something to do. Because when you go downtown, all you have is stuff like to eat, and there's nothing you can really do, like, you can just walk on the sidewalk and do nothing. And that's why there's such a problem with the, like, skaters and everything, because they don't have a skate park, and one of the big things in our, one of the big things that we're working on is the skate park, and is this, oh, yeah. And basically, this, we really think that skate parks are more needed than restaurants and stuff like that. Not, oh, not just skate parks, something to do that would apply to teenagers and pre-teens and that age group.
Thank you, Previn.
Okay.
Just let you know, I've got a lot of yard work, but if you're looking for something to do, yeah, give me a shout. Yeah. Now, thank you very much. It's hard to come up and speak to council. I appreciate it, Previn. And then finally, Tori Kaufman?
Hi. So my name is Tori Kaufman. As you know, my husband Nick and I are owners of Harmony Yogurt. We have been here since May of 2007. We, our local residents, we employ more than 20 residents of this city, contribute to many charities, the Kids Fund, Burton Park Project, the San Carlos Police Department, youth services, and various schools, and fundraisers for those schools. We love being in this community. We feel to be a great part of this community and actually would not like to consider moving out of this community. Now, that being said, we feel that allowing a fourth frozen yogurt facility, because now there are three of us here, is extremely redundant. We think it would be detrimental to the growth of this city. We think that in addition to that redundancy, the parking is definitely an issue, and more so once B and Kinnies opens and the new Italian restaurant opens. Now, I know Red Mango has done their own parking study, but those two businesses, most importantly, the, the market, have not even been built yet, or at least opened. So we think that this is a major issue. Compounding that is Red Mango's exception for additional percentage use for their seating. Now, yes, Councilman Gruca mentioned, we did stick to the 30%. More than 45% public use will greatly impact parking even more so. I just ask that you, you really consider the parking, that you, even before you can make a decision, that you really need to consider another parking analysis to make sure that all the uses that are coming into the city in the next few months are considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there any other, anybody from the public like to address council in the public hearing? Council motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And one point of clarification for council, one person from the public mentioned that there is no appeal of the percentage of seating. Is that true, staff?
I'm looking at the public notice that was sent out. It's for both items. I looked at the planning commission motion and findings, and it was on both matters also. So I, my assumption is it's for both, both items. Both for, before the planning commission, anyway.
Thanks for the clarification. Counsel, comments, discussion? Ms. Gruca?
First off, I'm a little bit surprised that our Italian member doesn't know too much about food service. I mean, I thought the Italians, you know...
We don't want to go there.
Okay.
We'd be here a while if we talked about food in Italian.
Well, the thing that, you know, we can, we can discuss this, and I can be convinced otherwise, but where I'm thinking right now is, on the parking issue, I remember when this came before the council before, and I believe I was on council when we looked at this ordinance... at this ordinance in the six months. Do we do six months? Do we do nine months? What do we do in terms of vacancies? And maybe I'm the only guy left that was on the council at that time. Bob, help me out. Was that, anyways, I know we wrestled with that, and I remember at the time thinking, should we even do this or not do it? Because it did seem like it potentially could hurt businesses. But we were concerned about businesses coming in to vacant spots and bringing a lot of parking with them and then, you know, creating a problem. But in this case, I think the pertinent question was asked, can any other business go in here and not have a parking issue either? And the answer is no. And so, and I think it is, I don't know if they, if Bianchini's know about this particular issue or not, but they're not here and they're not saying anything about it, so, and they're going to be the biggest user of that parking lot and the biggest, you know, as far as having any kind of interest in this issue, I would think they would, and they're not here to say anything about it. So I'm not so much concerned about the parking issue, and I could see just moving ahead and agreeing with the Planning Commission. The area that I do have an issue with is the seating, and not so much because I necessarily see it as an issue, although it was brought up that the more seating you allow, it could have an impact on the parking, and if parking does become a problem, I could see that being a factor. That, you know, the more people you allow to sit down and stay there, the more people that potentially might have their car there and park and stay longer and so forth. But more because I think, you know, whether it's because of a definition or whatever, it's in there, and I know when you read things like that, you generally think to yourself, well, we have to, we have to play by that rule, and 30% is the maximum. Already, I think, although I like the idea of storefront being pushed back and you create more outdoor seating, and I don't want to do anything to do away with that, it actually is part of our design standards, even though it's not hard in our code. Our design standards talk about doing things like that with storefronts. So I'm in agreement with pushing the storefront back. What I'm not in agreement with necessarily is allowing for 35% within the, from the storefront back to food prep, being over 30%. So I would deny that part of it, but allow for the parking.
Ms. Mayor, Ross?
Well, first of all, I'd like to recognize Harmony, because they should be a first-class organization, great product, you've been a super citizen in our, in our city, and a great example for other businesses, so thank you for that. Most of my comments will deal with lending on my experience of Planning Commission, in which there's a lot of ordinances and laws and so forth. A very good example that I could refer to is down on South Laurel, close to the Chamber, there's a daycare center that we looked at, and we needed, I think the ordinance needed three parking spaces. And they made an appeal or looked for a variance, basically, or an exception, whatever you want to call it. They said, "Well, listen, we, there's an existing building there, we have two instructors, sometimes three at peak time. Our city rules say you need to provide parking on-site for those people." However, why they asked for a variance is for these children, they wanted to provide some outdoor playtime. And if you go by the facility now, we made an exception. Well, I think there's still one parking space, but we, we basically excused two parking spaces. It's rubber padding and game features, and part of the daycare experience is, if they were your children, you'd want them inside, but you'd also want them outside and the quality of life and the quality of the service. And we looked at the out, the area, we looked at the impact on parking, and so we, we actually created a variance to try to help the business in looking beyond what the ordinance said. And so here we have a situation. I do think we need to look at the business, look at the area, Bianchini's going in. I'm not an expert on this, but I would suspect that, well, let me look at Starbucks. We all know that Starbucks creates a tremendous parking havoc, 6:30 to 8 o'clock in the morning, but there's no one downtown yet, so it doesn't create a problem. And for some unknown reason, I don't understand, people drink Starbucks coffee all day long. And I don't know what the mix of people that drive there in mid-morning or mid-afternoon or that are basically part of the traffic flow. But I would suspect that a yogurt shop probably is not have as much impact on parking because of my assessment, I believe our parking peaks are lunchtime and dinnertime. And I wouldn't expect a lot of people are going to lunch at a yogurt shop or going to dinner, but after lunch or after dinner, they're going to the yogurt shop. They're also going to a yogurt shop in the middle of the afternoon, or on a hot day on a Saturday, anytime. And so you actually, it is a business in which has some mix, I don't know what that mix is, but I think it softens the parking demand, because I do think they get a significant percentage of their customer base who goes downtown at off-times, or goes downtown for another reason and walks by and sees it and buys it, or goes to get them dinner, and at 7:30, 8 o'clock, they don't get dessert at the restaurant, they go to the yogurt shop and get something. So there is a softening there. So based on my experience, I, I like to, you know, look at the starting point, where our ordinances are, but I'm surely one to try to accommodate and do as much as possible to help businesses come in town, create vibrance, create foot traffic, create activity. And the only part I, I'm not reserved on, but of course, don't feel I could do anything about is this area of competition. When you have one great shop, another shop grows up, gets up close. When the third Starbucks went in town, I feel the same way. I'd truly like to have a couple Pete's and three Starbucks, but I have no control over that. That's the spirit of competition. So my summary is, I think we need to apply some flexibility and do the right things here.
Ms. Mayor, Ahmad?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question initially, that if this is approved, then the Red Mango would have three spaces approved. How is that policed, and what happens if all of a sudden we find Red Mango is using 20 spaces? What are the remedies that exist, and how is that maintained?
Then, then actually having three spaces assigned, they're getting an exception from the three spaces they need. They can, people can park anywhere. Unless your question was going to, well, what if later on it's such a busy use that, like Starbucks, you know, 25 people are coming at once? I'm not sure what your question was, but there are no assigned spaces.
Understood that not assigned. I guess there was, Mr. Mayor, one case of a permit that was issued to a art school for a certain number of parking spaces. They had taken up significantly more, and the use permit was pulled, if I'm correct.
I guess to correct Councilmember Ahmad, actually, the issue was number of students attending, not number of parking spaces. But the council member is correct that this, this use would be permit, is allowed subject to the use permit. If the applicant violates any of those terms, it can come back to the zoning administrator, but not specifically for parking.
But so, but to your point, it's, it's not policed. In other words, there's, there's no accounting for it?
No, there would not be, not be any code enforcement with respect to parking, what other terms are.
Understood.
Other terms and conditions of the use permit, or the exception would be.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make my comments fairly brief. We, very early on my term on council, we had the question of conditional use permits for downtown come before us. I look at the good folks from Harmony and love their product, love their store, and if I was in their position, I would fight absolutely as, as hard as I could. But candidly, from the position of what mix of stores we have in downtown, those tools really don't exist with us. If somebody wanted to open up a secondhand antique store in that space, they could move in, but we would still be having the conversation about additional parking. I think I would, there is no question that we don't want to have vacant buildings in downtown. We want to see our downtown moving forward and vibrant. I've gone through all the details of the yogurt store pretty accurately, and learn more about yogurt sales and the number of servings everybody expects. It's, that's a lot of yogurt in St. Carlos, I got to tell you. But I do, I've not heard anything tonight that would lead me to think that we should overturn the decision of the planning council.
Ms. Mayor Grisilli?
Never an easy issue when there's businesses involved. I spoke to Mr. Kaufman a few months ago and walked around with him and talked about this issue for some amount of time. The technical issues, again, I, some of my colleagues are more into the technical percentages of this, that, or the other, of what the code could be. That can be very complicated. I remember we're sitting on the Planning Commission, the same thing. I always, I always sometimes tried to look at the bigger picture in my mind, as opposed to the technicalities. I had a line on staff to tell me what the technicalities were and try to look at the bigger picture. To me, it's, this is an economic issue of what businesses we have in town, what businesses can be in town, as Councilmember Ahmad mentioned. I know for a fact, we have, on St. Carlos Avenue, we have a lighting store, we have another space, and then we have another lighting store. I personally couldn't figure out why they opened up the second lighting store, but they are there, literally 25, not even 25 feet apart. I don't know how they're doing, but they're both open right now. It's so difficult to say, this business can come in, and this one can't. As we talked about earlier, we had this discussion about what should be in the business plan. We talked to the Chamber of Commerce, tried to get input on, on what we're going to do. Cutting to the chase, it's very hard for me to, to, to vote for the appellant tonight on this item. I just can't see the, I think we're just, we, at this point, either our codes are not selective enough, nor can, I don't know if they ever can be, because we had this discussion. It's, it's, it's an item that, that's an economic one, and it's very difficult, especially for people who have been here and have done a good job and done stuff for the community. The only thing I would say, and again, I know this sounds like a, sort of a cop-out or appeasement, is that I really feel that if we, if we, because of the size of these businesses, I understand why we have fees. I understand that if we didn't have fees, everybody would appeal any, any decision that was made by the zoning administrator or the Planning Commission, because if we had it at $200 or $100 or $50, you'd have a line out the door. But for this, for $1,293, and then for $1,500 more to come to us, I would vote to deny the appeal, as I mentioned, but I would vote to also refund the $1,293 to the, to the appellant. Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I share with Councilwoman Grokot the concern about 46% of the seating, although, you know, hearing everybody weigh in, I'm not sure that we've got quorum on that. But I got to say, the, to me, it's a little bit of a slippery slope in our code, and I think it does have an impact on the parking in the long run. I know those two things are not interrelated as far as the code goes, but I think they are completely related when, if everybody started to appeal and they got, you know, 50% again, more seating space, that we're going to have a bigger parking problem than we already have. So I think that things are related, but not seeing quorum on that. You know, I, I'm completely sympathetic to the, to the Harmony folks. You know, my, we love Harmony. My family loves Harmony. We go down there all, you know, all the time. I have a, you know, in general philosophically, I love small local business owners, and I'm concerned about the national trend of, and the economic trend, at times where larger stores can come in and undercut local businesses, because I think local businesses, and I think the Kaufmans are a great example of when you can connect to owners and feel like you have this, you know, like, you're supporting each other with great products and, and great But with, you know, private industry and regulating private industry, it's just incredibly slippery slope, and it's a thing that in general, we're in a free-market society. So it's, it, you know, it's difficult for me always to take sort of the emotional issue, which is, you know, from what really is, I think, the, the overall competitive issue in allowing businesses to sort of compete, put out a good product. And I do believe it's also an economic decision to see a vacant space for 18 months in St. Carlos. That's painful for the citizens and painful for everybody all the way around. I think, given again how I'm reading council tonight, that the challenge for Red Mango is going to be to be a good citizen of St. Carlos. I got to say, the Kaufmans have gone above and beyond what most businesses in most communities do, and I don't think that's lost on any of the citizens in St. Carlos that I've talked So again, I would vote, together with the council tonight, I would agree with Vice Mayor Grisilli that to refund the $1,293 of the, because they're essentially paying a couple of fees there, so I would agree with Vice Mayor Grisilli there. And without, without any further--
I would like to make a motion, and I hear what you're saying about consensus, but I'm not sure. If I can get a second on this, then it at least opens up the opportunity to have a little bit more discussion on the item. So I'm going to try this, and then I will say to council, just in terms of procedure, if, if I get a second, and then you don't like where things are going, you can always make, put up a competing motion, and if your motion gets voted on, then it will do away with mine. So here is my motion. I would move that we, that we deny the appeal on the parking issue, however we uphold the appeal as it applies to the 35%, and we would be count, we would be doing exactly what staff is doing, which is the 35% or the 30% would be considered from the face of storefront back into the interior of the building. So it would not include, as staff did not, the outdoor seating. So we would allow the outdoor seating. And then I would also have as part of my motion that we would permit the return of the, what was it, $1,253--
$1,293.
$1,293, the application, and we would, we would go ahead with that. So that would be my motion.
Is there a second?
Continue discussion, I'll second.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I guess I have a question, in, in the spirit of getting the discussion. I guess I would like more of a read of what the issue with the 46% is. My take on the floor space was really, I linked it to parking, and what I thought I understood was, if we start to see that this particular business really blows out and uses a lot of parking, then it goes back to the zoning administrator, and we can start to look at how does the use come back. But is the issue here, we want to redo how we establish floor space? Give me more to understand what the, what the issue is.
My concern is not entirely just with this case, but also, as the mayor said, it can be a slippery slope. We could have other applicants come in. We could even have something of a fast food business come in and say, "Well, you know, we're going to try," because you've opened up the, the floor area threshold on these businesses, and so we're, we're going to make an attempt to come in and be a business in the downtown, and it could be something that we don't want, A. And B, I think we, if we open up this Pandora's box, we may end up with more parking problems than, than we anticipate. So for those two reasons, and I guess my third reason is, again, I understand what the attorney is saying, is the, the ability to ask for an exception is part of the rules. But so often, you know, I know as a, as a designer and architect, you read what the rules are, and you, you're very loath to go into asking for an exception. And in fact, in my business, asking for an exception is because there's something that is grossly unfair about the, the property that you own that does not allow you to use it as normal, as any other person can use their property. So exceptions are very hard to come by. It seems a little bit easier in this process, but that's a different argument.
So again, just to me, to crystallize it, it's effectively, we're doing a 40, in my opinion, 46%, from 30% to 46%, which seems like a large gain on seating area, based on an appeal that, that's sort of, did you want to say something, Senator?
Yes. There were findings in the Planning Commission staff report that were part of the Planning Commission's motion. Those were, that was the motion to deny the appeal.
Those were, that was the motion to deny the appeal and allow the use permit and the exception. And I was gonna ask you to include in that motion those two findings that were on pages three and four of the staff report, because you'd be upholding the, as you know, planning commission. If you're not, if you're gonna, if you would go with the, the motion that's on the floor, then I think you should state some reason, some rationale for denying the exception. So you have a finding on the record with regard to denying the exception.
Yeah. Good. Through the chair, could I ask a question? Aren't we, if we go through Councilmember Grokot's motion, and that's approved, aren't we just gonna have, and it may be, I'm not asking Red Mango, but I'm just, it's intuitive, aren't they just gonna redesign the building, cost whatever it costs, I don't know, million dollars, two billion dollars, I'm being facetious, whatever it costs, and then come back and meet the percentage and it's moot? I mean, isn't that really what's gonna happen here? I know you can't answer that, you don't know what's gonna happen, but I mean, really, all that percent, all that is, is just going back and redesigning a building, in effect?
That's what it sounds like to me.
Yeah.
Is that a legal question?
Yeah.
Is that a question?
Excuse me, Bob, what do you think about this?
It's a planning But no, through the, through the chair, you're, you're a designer, Mr. Grokot. I mean, in effect, I appreciate where you're going here, and I, believe me, I have empathy all the way around on this. This is a very difficult issue. I realize you're trying to split the baby a little bit, and I'm, I always like to do that. But in effect, all this is gonna really do is postpone, if, if we, you know, say this percentage, whatever this percentage is, someone's gonna go back and redesign in three months, come to, to, to the staff and go, okay, here's the, I made the percentage, and it's moot. I just, I don't know what we're doing, except postponing the inevitable.
Right. I'm, I'm, what I, you'll notice that what I did not get into in any of my discussion is whether we should have two yogurt shops, or four, or three.
I understand.
It's an open market, as far as I'm concerned. No, my, my concern is, is tied to two things. One is, once we do something, we tend to set precedents.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And so we will get, you know, we may open up Pandora's Box, as I called it, for other applicants to look for this variance on floor area.
Okay.
Threshold, you know, maximum. And that, in turn, could trigger, in ways that we don't know, parking issues in the downtown. Because I do think that in, depending on the use, and in certain cases, and even perhaps in this case, the more floor area you have, the more seating you have, the more seating you have, the more customers, the more cars.
I understand.
So that, and that would be my finding, to speak to the attorney.
But in effect, in this specific instance, if we follow your motion
Yeah.
In three months, or however long it takes for somebody to draw the pictures and get it through.
Well, making a change like this, I'm sure the architect could go in tomorrow and make a few changes.
Well, I'm just saying, whatever it is, three days, three months, three hours, it's just gonna, it's, it's, it's
Right, the business would go forward.
It's probably inevitable.
My understanding is probably the business would go forward.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to prevent the business from going forward. I'm just trying to, number one, in some regards, be fair to other businesses who have gone before this one, and have abided by thirty percent.
Right.
And number two, not open the floodgates for businesses that come after these to also go for thirty-five, or, nearly, in some cases, because they've been created, creative in having the outdoor space, and I'm, I'm saying, you know what, that's really cool that you are creative, and you've got that outdoor space.
Right.
So I don't want to discourage that necessarily. But for them to be creative, and now they're up to forty-six percent, and they've got, that, that number of, the seating and the number of customers is going to impact parking, and that's my
Right, but isn't, isn't that, isn't that point, shouldn't we discuss that point in a separate part, and maybe, again, go back, as Ms. Nelson said, and revisit the code, and revisit the ordinance in a separate, completely
That's what I said earlier.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I'm sorry, I apologize.
It's not either or. We could, we could do this action tonight, and we could direct staff that we want to look at this.
But the point I'm getting at, I wouldn't mind going back and revisiting it, and I agree with you on that, but to do this, I just, I just feel it's just, we're postponing the inevitable for one item, well, if we can come back in the next couple of months and sort of not close the loophole.
I got you. So just in the interest of time here, why don't, we've got a motion before council.
Okay.
We can either take a vote on that, or we can entertain a revise, revision of that motion, or somebody can ask Councilmember Grokot to
Vice Mayor, I'll make a motion to deny appeal and refund the twelve
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three.
I'll second that motion.
So is this a
Second motion.
A substitute motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Finding, with the find-
With findings on page five of the report here.
Page three and four of the planning com-
So is that, yeah. So, excuse me, Mr. Landzone with a substitute motion, then what do we do with the first one?
Substitute motion goes first.
Sorry?
Substitute motion.
Take the vote on, and if it passes, then my, my
Okay, great. I'm sorry.
Were you voting on first?
We're voting on the substitute motion first.
Yes.
I'll go second.
We have Sandy.
Andy Royce.
I have a second.
Christine?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And do we, great, so we're all set with that, then? All right, we will move on to item number nine A. Nine A is to, excuse me, Brian, go ahead and kick it off.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Item nine A is a discussion of executing agreements with R3 Consulting and environmental planning consultants to enhance the city's construction and demolition ordinance. Council will recall from the last meeting that we gave you a series of items that were related to the discussion we had in February about improving the city's recycling performance. And we noted last time that the city is at forty-seven percent in reported diversion, as the state calls it, we're three percent below the threshold. We are now up for an extension of our good faith efforts, as the state calls it, and that hearing's going to be in December. One of the things that the state zeroed in on when we met with them a couple months ago was, in fact, this area of our performance in the C and D ordinance. We are, we do have an ordinance, we're one of the first cities that did, however, we do not have the level of reporting that other cities do. And in researching this earlier in the year, what I found was a number of smaller cities in similar size to San Carlos, or in some cases even smaller than San Carlos, the way they have addressed this is they have both enhanced their ordinance in terms of deposits and reporting, and also what they've done is they've added contract counter-help once or twice a week, and as a result, we've seen pretty much all of these cities jump significantly beyond fifty percent in terms of their reported diversion. I reviewed this with the SBWMA staff, and also with the state, and, and what I was told was that this particular program, and also another program that we talked to you about last month, or last meeting, namely the so-called progressive rates for commercial accounts, are the two things that the council could do that is most likely to take you over fifty percent. And so staff, a couple months ago, did a request for proposal, we got two responses back. Chris Valley, the building official, and I interviewed the two firms, and of the two firms, we selected this proposal. This one, we felt, was much more compelling than the other proposal, because we had two different firms team up to provide services to the city, and essentially, it's a two-step process. The first step is a consulting assignment not to exceed $48,000, which would basically update our ordinance and update our reporting, education, outreach, et cetera, to make it comparable to other cities in the SBWMA. And then, second, we would have an hourly counter-help component that would last, we're proposing initially for two years, and then we would evaluate it at that time to see whether it needed to be extended, or whether this is something that could be taken in-house. We did note in talking to the other cities, places like Hillsborough and Burlingame and Atherton, that even though they all started on this contract expert basis in the building counter, none of them have brought it in-house, although it was an option in their agreement as much as it's an option here. Chris and I, in our discussions, felt that we should review it in two years and see how it's doing, but it seemed, in talking to the other cities in the SBWMA who've tried this, that they felt that both components, both the updating in the reporting, the ordinance, and the outreach, and the counter-help was essential in making progress. But to give you one example, I believe it was in Hillsborough, prior to implementing the C and D program and progressive rates, their reported diversion rate was at twenty-five percent, and today it's at sixty-two percent. So it's a pretty dramatic increase. And as you'll recall from your February meeting, one of the challenges the council gave me at that time, is you said, come back later in the year and tell us, how do we get over fifty percent? And I think what the staff comment today is, if you do this program and the progressive rates, it's pretty clear to me you're gonna get there. So that's, that's what we're recommending to you tonight.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moore, comments? Councilmember Grokot?
I'm curious if we looked at the city of Burlingame as an example.
Yes, we did.
And the reason I ask that is because I just recently submitted a project to the city of Burlingame, and all they require, they required the contractor to provide, and before the permit was released, the contractor has to provide a diversion plan. And what most contractors are then doing is going to haul companies that, that this, how they're designed, that's their business model, is we can take this stuff away, you know, for instance, like shingles off a roof, they can take it away, they know where to take it, and get it recycled, and you're done. So the reason I ask that is I'm curious, why do we need a consultant to tell us how to do this, when Burlingame has, has got something that's pretty simple, and that, like I say, the onus pretty much is on the contractor to, to, you know, go find a haul company that can do this, and the haul companies are out there. I just am not
Well, my understanding is that this firm is, in fact, the firm that's doing the work in Burlingame.
They are.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
And the same with Hillsborough, and the same with Atherton. That basically what's happening in our city is we have the ordinance, we're doing some of the paperwork, but apparently, we're not getting full credit for what we're doing, in part because apparently we're not doing paperwork to the detail it needs to be done.
Are, so we're not doing anything that requires a, a plan to be submitted? To me, Brian, it's, it's not much different than, you know, when you turn in a project, you also have to provide at some point, before you get your permit, or before you have the inspection anyways, for like hold-down, pull-out testing. And you have to tell, and, and, you know, the building department will provide you, here's a list of engineers that'll do this for you, but you just tell us who it's gonna be, and you check the box and, and so forth, and, and when you turn in your, your paperwork before you get your permit, you have told the city, yes, we will do a poll test, and here's the firm we're gonna use, done deal. It's not that difficult.
Well, in my
I don't understand why we can't do the same thing with diversion.
Well, in my discussions with the city of Burlingame, and also, I understand Chris Valley, I also talked to city of Burlingame, the way it works there is the contract counter person is the person, in fact, at building, who both gives the, the developer contractor, whoever it is, the standards, and then is the one that actually follows up, both to make sure that it's done and documenting it. And that seems to be the piece that we're missing here, and that we don't have people on staff who are familiar enough with this law and this process to perhaps carry it from start to finish.
Okay. I've asked my questions, and then I'll discuss it with council.
One question.
Yes?
Councilman Ryan, I'm very much for the program, and when I hear tons, five, ten tons of stuff getting recycled, it's increasing our diversion rates, very exciting. Is there, are there any situations where we could cause undue hardship on a contractor because of space requirements? I mean, there are some corners and hills and properties where just putting a debris box is all that'll fit. I don't know the mechanics of how all this recycling and the types and how many bends it takes, but I don't know if Chris or you, is, is there any, should there, are there any hardships we're creating just because of our, some of our really difficult lots and small lots and hills in creating the program?
Councilmember Royce, in my discussions with the cities that have the program, that hasn't come up, so I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
That's an issue, but it's certainly something we could look at.
Okay. Just, just to look at that, then, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Moore?
Mr. Mayor, I was looking at two points on this. In phase one of the project, essentially, we're looking at, the quote is, complete review and update of the city's C and D ordinance and procedures, and this is gonna be just north of $48,000.
Well, there's also outreach to the contractor community, there's educational materials. I mean, basically, what we want to do in phase one is not only update what we have, but we also want to kind of do all the outreach education, educate the staff, and then kind of get to the point where the, the contract counter-help is gonna kick in. That's, that's the intent.
So that's, that's within the scope of work going from task one through six?
Correct.
All right.
And again, this is patterned, basically, on what we've seen in the other cities of our size or smaller. This is kind of how they've all ramped up their program. In some cases, they had ordinance like ours before, other cases, they did not. But the, the common thread of success, if you will, seems to be to bring in a firm like this, to up, upgrade the, the level of what you're doing, and then, second, to actually have someone who's a specialist be at your counter twice a week for a couple years and get it rolling.
That was actually my second question, so, I guess the point I'm gonna make, Mr. Mayor, on the first part, is that we don't get a lot of a break on phase one, considering that a lot of the materials I'm looking at are probably recycled. In terms of the ordinances that they'll provide us with, the educational materials that they'll put out, it strikes me that the, I've, I've got no problem with people making a profit, but it just strikes me that this is a pretty healthy margin. Number two, I'm looking at phase two, which requires somebody to be at the counter. So now
Correct.
Is this a hire? Is this a, what is this person coming onto our staff? Is this a staff?
This is a consultant, this is not a hire, per se. This is basically having somebody at the counter twice a week, so that when an application comes in that's subject to these requirements, we say, you know, when you come in on Tuesday or Thursday, you need to talk to Joe Jones, the C and D consultant, and he or she will walk you through the process, give you the proper paperwork, and then, as you're doing your project, we'll make sure that you're following all the rules. And if you are, in fact, following the rules, you get your deposit back. Interestingly, when we talk to the five cities that have this program, most of them work on a system where if you comply, you get your deposit back, if you don't comply, the city holds the deposit. In one of the cities, Hillsborough, they do it differently. Instead of having a deposit system, they actually have a penalty system, where they don't collect any money upfront, but if you don't follow it, then you get fined based on a percent of the permit. That, you know, we're, we're kind of, in the current model, we have the, the deposit system, and I would anticipate we would stay with that. Although, obviously, any changes we make to the ordinance would have to come back to the council.
And is the anticipation that the $70,000 approximate is gonna be offset by permit fees, or is this simply an expense that the city bears to maintain the requirements of the C and D?
It would be the latter. The intent would be that this would be something that would be passed on through the garbage rates to both the commercials, residential, very similar to the other five communities.
Just to be clear, clear of what I've just heard, so the $70,000, it is a fee that is borne by the city, but it'll be paid for by increasing the rates to residential and commercial?
Correct. That's correct. And again, that was one of the reasons that we brought it to you last week in that discussion about your 2009 solid waste rates.
Got it.
That we felt that since we're in the, we're just now beginning to work with the consultants and the SBWMA on looking at the components of what's in those rates, we wanted to have that discussion with you now. And we also thought it was appropriate to bring it to your attention, because I think the state folks have made it very clear that since we're not at fifty percent, this is something they could force us to do if we're not inclined to do it ourselves. And, and my feeling is, we're wiser to design our own program versus having something mandated by the state.
And again, non-compliance can lead to fines
With eighty-nine thirty-nine, the
Is a $10,000 a day fine, or something like that?
I think it's a lot more than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Grisilli? I, you know, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with getting our staff up to speed on, on all these things. If we do one, phase one, do we, we don't have to do phase two?
We don't, but based on what we've heard from the other five cities, the program really doesn't get you there if you don't have both components.
But if for some magical reason, we all of a sudden got there, then we wouldn't necessarily have to, I mean, we could, I guess you, it's never enough, if you get fifty percent, you'd want sixty, if you want sixty, we'd go to seventy.
Well, again, I think, at the end of the day, it's up to the council if you do not approve phase two, but I think what we've heard from the state and the SBWMA, and also, frankly, in my discussions with Mr. Valley and his staff, I think everybody's kind of lined up in that we need both.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, I just, I just wanted to verbalize that. And again, you know, again, to piggyback on Councilmember Ahmad, just so it's clear, in effect, the first phase is, we have money on hand, because we have a surplus in our account, correct? And the second phase, we probably won't have a surplus, so it'll be passed on to the...
Actually, the surplus we have right now is sufficient to cover both phases in the first year.
The first year, okay.
Correct.
But anything more than that, which might have to go on, would have to be borne by the ratepayers?
It may or may not, again, it depends on what the calculations for next year's rate show. Right now, we're in a surplus position.
Right, okay. I just, again, because we're going to go to 9B and 9C, and it's just, it never seems to end here on some, it's just coincidence, I know it's all convergence and timing, but...
Well, that's why we brought them two together, so you could see the whole picture.
Yeah, and I just, again, worry with our, with who's going to be picking up the garbage for the next two years, the incentive that they're going to have to be cooperative and whatever, not going...
Well, I guess to the Vice Mayor's point, one of the, another reason we're doing this, quite frankly, is because of who is the current carrier.
I understand.
Their collection of recycling has actually been falling the last couple of years, it's been a struggle for us to actually have our rate go up. So, part of our strategy at the staff level is to say that since the state has been visiting us, and since the state has said, you know, we may force you to do C and D whether you like it or not...
Right, I understand.
I've said, let's go there and do it ourselves and keep the cost down.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, everybody's asking, can we do it cheaper than this? Is there any way that we could study what Burlingame did, try to alter a few ordinances, have planning or building, take a look at a couple of the ordinances?
Well...
And then, I mean, that's really what you're hearing, Brian, is everybody is just asking, is there a more of a stripped way, stripped-down way to get this program done? And, so I'm just asking that directly.
Okay, and I guess in the opinion of staff, since we basically copied the Burlingame RFP and process, we're cloning what they did.
Right, so...
I guess my feeling would be no.
Right, so if we pressed on this and said, hey, look, we need to get it done for half that amount, what would you suggest? What would a stripped-down program be? What kind of answer? You would say they'd...
I guess we'd have to go back to the vendor and see what they could do for that dollar amount.
Okay, thank you. Without any other questions for staff, I think we should discuss.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you've given my spirit on this thing entirely by your last comment. I think this can be done, I'm in favor of doing it. I think it should be done. But, number one, I think we, you know, the rows have already been, have already been hauled, we don't have to pay to do it again. I think we can find the ordinances, or think of them ourselves. There are companies out there, like I say, that do this kind of hauling, and they're the ones that, you know, get signed off on where they take the material, and it's just a, you know, it's a paper chase, is what it is. It's verifying that the company that picked it up took it to the right place and had it recycled, whether it's a wood product, or a shingle product, or whatever, in construction that, you know, you get out of demo, concrete, you know, so forth. And so, it's, you know, paper documentation, for the most part. And I don't see why we should spend $46,000 to go after this, nor do I see why this should be borne by the ratepayers in general, when it's a, you know, it's, if you're going in for a building permit, and you need a demo permit first and so forth, you know, the general public doesn't pay for your building permit, so if you're having your house torn halfway down, and you've got to get rid of your roof, and you have to recycle that material, you should pay for it. I don't think it should be something that's borne by the ratepayers in general, it should be paid for, you should pay a fee to get this done, to have your product recycled. So, that philosophical way I do not agree with, and my, you know, what I'd hope we would do is direct council, yes, let's get this done, but let's look at, there's got to be some other avenues to getting this done. There also has to be a way to create a rate system whereby the applicant who's using it pays for it.
Just to that point, before, I mean, for me, if we're, but we're requiring that they do it, so that's, that's why I think it's, so you're just saying, if we require it, then everybody we require it, I would pay more than...
At the time you're using it, you're required to get a building permit, too, and you have to pay for it.
Understand.
Yeah.
I have a question through the chair. Mr. Moore, I mean, and I don't mean back and forth, but could you speak to, I quite honestly sort of agree with Mr. Grocott on this, I mean, if I'm tearing my house down, why does he have to pay for it?
Well, again, I mean, the way it's been done in the other communities that have this program, is they either have the deposit system...
Right.
Similar to what we have, or in the one instance in Hillsborough, they have the penalty system, where if you don't pay. But all five of those agencies run the cost of the counterhelp person through the rates for both residential and commercial. We were talking with the city attorney while you were talking, and certainly, if you want to add a brand-new permit fee to every permit that requires C and D, you could do it, say another $500 when you come in, that's theoretically possible, we just haven't seen any agency do it that way yet.
I appreciate they haven't done it, and I'm just sort of stunned that we're the brightest people on the block here, that we're coming up with this great idea, and other council members on the peninsula haven't talked about this. You know, there's some bright people out there, maybe they just have, I don't know.
Evidently, we're...
It would be as it gets. Yeah, I guess so.
Mr. Lanzon, it would be a development fee, and when we come around at the first of the year to increase, to increase or adjust fees, we could have a cost study done by that time, and adjust whatever the building permit fees are that would cover this, and you can decide at that time whether you want to put that fee in the fee schedule.
Mm-hmm.
How to offset these costs.
Yeah, I just, again, I, you know, and not that it's rare that you and I agree, because we agree more than most people think, but I really, I mean, I have to honestly say, it's, when it goes back to the ratepayer, I can't figure out why I'm paying for you to, and I don't mean you, I'm, you know, somebody else to take...
Figuratively, yeah.
Figuratively, to pull down, pull down the roof. It just doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to me.
City Manager Weiss?
I mean, one thought, I mean, first of all, I should mention that if, the program is mandated on us by state regulation, and if there are fines imposed upon us, those will be borne as a responsibility of the city, and they'll be passed on to the ratepayers. We won't be able to go after individual violators to recover all of the costs associated with that program, because it's a mandatory program that we have to comply with, and we aren't complying with it currently. Secondly, we can investigate the practicality of a development fee in parallel with that. Brian's indicating that there's sufficient funds in the account currently to cover the cost of this particular contract, and then, if you would like us to investigate the feasibility of imposing an additional development fee to recoup as much of this cost moving forward after this initial period, we'd be happy to do that. But I would still recommend to you that there's a need to establish this program and implement this program currently. And I would recommend that we do that with the existing reserve funds that we have in the revenue stream for this purpose. Support this contract as it's currently proposed. I mean, there is a ten-day termination clause within the contract that would allow us to get out of this contract if we chose that that was the proper course. But I would recommend that we get on with this particular program, and then, if you'd like to have us investigate a new fee, who, carry on the implementation costs moving forward, that we take that up to a later date.
So, to be clear, you're saying the implementation cost is the $70,000? Or, I'm not sure if you're coupling 48 and 70 together to say, as part of this contract, or you're uncoupling those two things?
Well, I'm coupling it for this contract, that we enter into this contract and get on with the program, and show a good faith effort to implement this program and get our diversion rates above 50%. We believe this is the biggest program that we can implement in order to get us there. And we believe that it's a cost-effective way to do that. Now, at the same time, you know, moving forward, there will be annual costs, as long as we continue to have staffing at the counter above and beyond what our current staffing allows. I mean, there's a possibility that we can train our existing staff and not bear the additional expense if the workload allows for that to occur. I don't believe that's the case in other cities. I don't believe that that's what they're finding as a practice in other cities. But if it is possible, we'd be happy to look at that. At the same time, I'd be happy to have staff investigate the feasibility of implementing a development impact fee to cover that annual repeating cost. But I, but I would recommend to you that we enter into this contract to get the program underway, and then, for future years, establish a permit fee, if the council deems that is appropriate, to recover or recoup as much of the operational costs as we can.
Through the chair, Mr. Lanzon, when would we have the opportunity to implement that fee?
Of, as early as, you know, March or April of next year. It's a hearing on development fees, we usually hold that in January, and 60 days from the day you change the fees, they're effective.
Okay. And again, with all due respect to the city manager, I apologize, I didn't, I don't think I thought about this issue enough, and usually, I talk to staff about this, or any issues that I have comments on, I guess it's sort of just, all of a sudden, it's come to me, sort of like an epiphany, just a second, please. It's come to me as some sort of an epiphany. So, I just, if we're sitting here in August, soon to be September, in effect, we're talking about six months, that we could implement a new fee.
Well, you know, if staff was able to figure out how much the fee should be, it could be brought to you in a month or two. Whenever you, whenever you have the hearing on the fee, it's, and you adopt it, it's effective 60 days after that date, so...
Okay, so, in less than six months, we could have, that's why I guess I have the difficulty, if we can do that, why do we, I mean, not why, because I guess there's a benefit, other cities are showing by spending this money, you know, to get everybody up to speed, but if we've got this other fee, it's automatically going to get up to speed, and we don't have to spend the $48,000.
Well, I guess I'd make it up...
And I apologize, you know, maybe I'm making this too simple, but, I'm sorry, just come back at me, please, and tell me why I'm not.
A couple of things. First of all, to your question about the fee, you probably will recall that a couple meetings ago, you did approve a fee study. We are in the process of selecting a firm, we can certainly roll this into that study. That's the first point. The second point is, we do have a hearing in front of the state on why we should not be held in violation of our permit, and have the state mandate this on us, and that's part of our thinking of starting the program ourselves now. It seems to me, since we have this date with the state, as you could say, in December, it would be wise for us to do this on our own, at a low-cost basis, which we, staff believes this is. And so, when we go into the hearing in Sacramento in December, we can say, it's underway, we are modernizing the ordinance, we do have the counterhelp, and then, we can begin, as the city manager suggests, moving that number up. Certainly, as the city attorney suggests, once the fee study is done, we can transition from applying it against the rate base to a fee, if that's the council's desire.
Mr. Moore, are we the only city that's going to have a date in December?
In the SBWMA, yes. Okay, but there will be other cities having... Well, they are, although I should point out, for example, in Daly City, which has a significantly lower rate than us, they were, in fact, sanctioned by the state, and they now do have additional programs, and the state did, in fact, do things that forced their rate to go up. I don't think we want to be in that place, and that's the reason staff is trying to be proactive on this.
Well, I'm trying, and you're adding information that we didn't, that I didn't have five seconds ago, okay? So, I appreciate that. I mean, there's got to be some rationale for this, I'm just trying to dig down to figure out what it was, so I appreciate that.
Great, I will take public comment real quick, please come over here, put in.
Thank you. This obviously was unexpected, but when I heard $78,000, I've got my blood boiling. But as, just as an example, as today, at the very day this morning, one of my associates, is also a contractor, was, went to, unfortunately, his house in the county, he had to take a demolition permit, disposal permit, to remove his sink, $15, without any, there was no big deal, the gal at the counter gave him the permit, and he paid the fee, and that was the extent. And the fee structure, the county apparently has a fee structure already in existence. Why do we have to pay that kind of money to establish a simple fee structure? I mean, that seems like outrageous to me. There's a simpler way to do this, and it does exist in other cities, and it's, you know, $300 to remove a sink, the county charges that.
What is the fine risk from the state?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I think the exposure is basically, there are a couple of things the state could do to us, they could certainly fine us, or they could impose a order to do certain things, and I think in my discussions with the state, it is apparent that the direction they would head is they would probably force us to do some of these C and D items. This is the one area where, in their audit of us in the last month or so, is the area they feel that we're not performing the way we should. So, I think it's a high likelihood that if we don't come up with a program along these lines, the state will force us.
Thank you. Counsel, I think we're in a motion of some sort, and we need to move on.
Mr. Chair, I would respectfully request staff to go back and take another look at this. As I said, the real onus is on, A, the contractor, and B, the subcontractor that he hires to haul away the material. And there is a way to verify where the material goes, and that it was done. It's simply, like I said before, you know, a paper trail. I don't see how that involves all that much in training of staff, or, I can see why we need to write an ordinance, but those ordinances must be out there, and even the fee schedule, as this gentleman said, potentially is out there. If we want to just do a little bit of work and look around at the county and other cities, I'm not sure we need a $48,000 contract with a consultant to do this. And that's, so, my wish is that we would just direct staff to go back and do a little homework and look, and dig into these businesses that do this kind of thing, where they take the stuff away, and they verify that it went to, you know, the proper place for recycling, and come back to us with a report on how that happens, and then, how we might implement a program, perhaps even without doing consulting. Then we can go to Sacramento, and we can say, we've got an ordinance, we've got a program in place, we've got the paperwork, and this is how it's going to be done from our counter.
You know, again, I apologize to staff, because I really, I really go against what...
Was that a motion?
That was a motion, I believe, wasn't it?
Well, I wouldn't be making a motion, per se, because I think the motion is to, so I would just ask for a consensus of the council, just give this back to staff, and have them bring it back to us with some more homework done on the procedures, and how the businesses operate to do this, and really, you know, give us an idea of how this is done, maybe some examples from other cities on fee structures and so forth. Do a little homework, come back to us.
Any clarification?
No, I, it's, it's just, it's very difficult for me to, again, I guess I'm looking at B and C, and it's all coming together to me, and it's just, it's just very, very frustrating, and it's not even 10:30 yet, and that's usually when I get frustrated. And I know staff has vetted this, and I know Mr. Valley and Mr. Moore have put a lot of time in this, and I'm not trying to denigrate that in any way, shape, or form, but knowing how, how fast the state works, I'm shocked they're going to have anybody working for them in December to have this hearing at this point in time. But it's just, it's just, I really believe that, you know, and again, when I started on council three years ago, I remember the first thing I looked at was the word consultant, and I, it was anathema to me. And we constantly have this, and maybe this is just one, and I can't, I can't really support this one either. I really believe we need to, and I'd be willing to help if there's some way that I can go out and do some legwork. I don't, I don't necessarily want to throw everything back to staff all the time that we do, because there's only, and I know you don't either, but there's certain, but I just really believe that there's got to be a simpler way, and if we go to the state and say, hey, here's what we're doing, we're doing something, I don't know how they can say, well, you're not doing it according, because you didn't hire a consultant, you're not doing it right? I don't know, that's just really hard for me. But anyway, I can't, I just can't, I can't, this time, I can't support the staff recommendation and all the alternative to hiring this firm.
Councilmember Royce?
Mr. Mayor, I, my understanding from what I'm hearing so far is, the state's got a gun to our head, if we don't start to bring up our diversion rates, we could face mandatory fines, additional mandated programs, or some other types of unpleasantness that the state will normally shove down our throat. I don't like the proposal in front of us. I would be inclined to move forward with Phase One, just to get everything moving. I'm not inclined to move forward with Phase Two, which is basically committing us to what looks like to be a permanent $70,000 exposure per year. If there is a one-time push to get the ordinances in place and get the outreach done, I could probably support that, I think it's expensive. I would like to go back and see if we can beat people up on that price. If they've done it in five cities, I can't imagine that we're too wacky different, but this is an expense that I have a hard time with also.
Councilmember Royce?
Yeah, I thought this was, was pretty clean, but I admire the, kind of the, the thinking Councilmember Grocott and Vice Mayor Grisilli, especially, and the types of questions and the discussions that we've had, so it seems like this is a work in progress, and that we need to do a little bit more before we move on on this.
So, staff, I think what you're hearing is, if you can see if we can get this done a slightly cheaper way, take a look at the proposal and see if there is a slightly, perhaps, different scope of work. I mean, I think council's just struggling with the scope of the work and the correlation with the amount of dollars we're spending. I think everybody's in support, and again, counsel, you argue with me, if I misrepresent anybody, but everybody's in support of compliant, everybody's in support of getting a C and D program going. I think we're having trouble correlating, within this proposal, the associated costs with the proposal. So, I think we're just asking you to go back and bang on the numbers, and see if there's a way that we can get it done in a less expensive, expensive fashion.
Well done.
Mayor, we're hearing, because we are concerned about the state, and maybe we haven't provided you enough information about what our downside risk is with respect to the state. you enough information about what our downside risk is with respect to the state. So I think we can do that in a more expanded fashion, so you'll have a better idea of why we're bringing this, have brought this forward. We'll look at ways to maybe find some other way to help pay for it. And we'll also bring, so you'll hear perhaps in stereo, some representative from SBWMA to also explain why we're the only agency in the SBWMA that's under 50% and has been under 50% since the start of the program. And we were one of the first ones with the C and D ordinance in place. It's a matter of educating the contractors with respect to it, and it's a matter of enforcement, and it's a matter of having the staff behind you to do it. The four cities that have a consultant, I mean, they hired someone outside their staff to, to help do it, because they didn't find a way to do it in-house either. And once you get the C and D program working, that is one way to boost up the numbers for, for diversion. As Mark said, it's a state-mandated program, it's unfortunate that the costs come back to us, and it comes back to the rate payers, just like SBSA, you know, which you're going to hear, you heard before, that's state mandate, it's federally mandated, Clean Water Act. This is the, you know, AB 939. So we'll bring it back in a month or two with maybe, with more information and perhaps some other ways to pay for it.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we need it back before the December hearing, for sure, and I think that if, if the issue's a little bit more vetted to council satisfaction, I don't think you see here resistance to comply with the program, we want to comply with the program, we want to understand the costs better. Through the chair?
Through the chair?
Yes.
What I'd also like to hear from staff is, give us some indication of how these businesses work that actually do the hauling, and how it is verified that they take what they say they're taking to the place that they're taking it to for recycling, and show us how that paper trail works.
Well, we'll do our best, I mean, but that's the kind of thing that we'd like to have a consultant who's worked in this field do for us. I mean, we'd like to bring somebody on board who understands this industry, that could help us explain that and comply with the law. We'll do the best we can at the staff level without that assistance if we don't have the support.
I think if that's clear that, to us, then that'll be an easier thing for us to make a decision on. With that, we'll move on to item number 9B.
Item 9B, again, is a continuation of the discussion we had last month, or, excuse me, last meeting regarding your upcoming 2009 solid waste fees. In our review with SBWMA of the franchise fees and also the AB 939 fees and other agencies, we were rather surprised to see that we've fallen pretty far behind the prevailing practice in both areas. You can see on Table 1 that in the SBWMA agencies, the average franchise fee today is somewhere around 10%, is the average. The range is 3% at the low end, to 15.5%, at the high end, and we are currently at 5%. And so staff believes that we should move towards the middle of that range, which would mean a 5% increase in both the residential and commercial rates in 2009. That would raise about $300,000 for the general fund, and again, given the city's severe general fund revenue problems, that's probably something worth looking at. In Table 2, the agents, you'll see the charges that the various agencies are assessing in the garbage rates for things, not only including street sweeping, which we also have, but also in AB 939 compliance, which is the topic we just talked about. In San Carlos, we do not charge anything towards AB 939 today. As you know, in the chart, it shows that Atherton is charging 14,000 in that area, Belmont 374,000 a year, and San Mateo 517,000. There's also a series of other charges. In San Carlos, we're charging a portion of my time to the rates, $10,000. You can see in other agencies, charges 52,000 in Menlo Park, 98,000 in Foster City, and 320,000 in San Mateo. Staff's observation in this area is obviously under AB 939. We believe that programs such as the C and D ordinance makes sense to be charged here, again, to bring us more in compliance with what the other agencies are doing to meet their requirements under the state law. And second, in the other category, we believe that it probably makes sense to go back and take a closer look at the charges for the staff that handles garbage complaints and garbage administration. I should add that in the budget this year, we did make a recommendation that was not funded by either the city manager or the city council to add a recycling coordinator position, because again, we've noticed in those cities with the higher AB 939 rates, they tend to have either a part-time or full-time recycling coordinator. It's interesting, San Carlos has the highest diversion rate in the commercial sector of the cities without full-time staff, but obviously, that hasn't been sufficient to meet the state targets. So those are some of the observations we have, and again, I would stress, as I did last time, that these recommendations are for next year's rate ba, not rate base, not this year's. And then finally, I would note that at the mayor's request, he had asked about rates in other communities, and a comment that I had made at the last meeting, that San Carlos' rates are lower, both than most of the cities in the SBWMA and around the Bay Area, both because we do not have those franchise and AB 939 charges, and also because we don't have things like the organics program and the single stream. And as you'll see in the attached study from SBWMA staff, you will see that that is indeed the case, that our rates are lower both within the SBWMA and from around the Bay Area. So that's just additional data for the council's edification.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
I had a question, these charts that are given that show the, let me hold one up so you know what I'm looking at. These charts here, Brian?
Yes.
Okay, we've got the 78, or 75th percentile and the 50th percentile at each one.
Correct.
And I suppose, if we raise the, the rate, these are the charts that will be affected?
Yeah, this, this is done each March as part of the so-called performance hearing of the current hauler, in this case Allied Waste, and the reason that's done is to show where each city fits on the range. It's obviously a policy question for the council to decide where you want your rates to be benchmarked. We haven't really paid at the staff level a whole lot of attention to either the 50th or the 75th percentile, we've been trying to just keep them low in general.
But if we raise to, if we do what is asked of us tonight and raise this fee, this is what will be affected, is all these charts, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and then that would get us to where, the 70?
That would get us towards the 50th percentile.
Towards the 50th, we're right at the 50th in all cases.
Mm-hmm.
And then Brian, for, I'm sorry, just to, so if we enact the franchise fee tonight, for instance, on a, and again, if you don't have this, I understand, it's a sort of a specific question, the 30 to 35 gallon rates, where we're currently at 1597 a month, that would go up by how much?
That would go up by 5%. I don't, that's different.
5%?
Eighty cents.
So 1597 goes up by 80 cents?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just sort of trying to correlate to real dollars and so forth, because sometimes percentages sound large or small, and you don't correlate to actual money.
Through the chair?
Please.
Then if we approve these rates, then there will be a Prop 218 hearing on what we approve.
Absolutely. At this point, and we'll get into it again at the next item, item C, staff is anticipating a Prop 218 hearing in 2008 to deal with the organic food scrap proposal for residential.
2008? This year, then?
Correct. And then a second Prop 218 hearing in sometime between February to April of next year to deal with the 2009 rates. Because again...
This issue, then?
Correct, that's correct. And again, that was something we discussed last meeting about, did the council want to do the organics now, or did they want to do them in conjunction with the 2009 rates, or did they want to do them in 2011? Because as you know, the new hauler will be doing the organics as part of the so-called basic service. So the council basically had three choices at the last meeting, and the council chose the first selection, which was, do the program as soon as possible.
Right, so, and again, the, the action we force is to direct staff to initiate the steps to do this, we still have, how many more steps for us to?
In the case of the franchise fee, as, as councilmember Grocott indicated, you would need a Prop 218 hearing. It was staff's intent that we would include this in the 2009 rates if this council wished to go forward. And then the other direction we would need from the council, as we indicated in the staff report, is whether you wanted to do this, you know, as part of the rates in January, whether you wanted to make a mid-year adjustment, did you want to raise it?
Right.
5%, 2.5%, more or less, you know?
Understood, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Brian. Discussion, counsel? Councilmember Royce? Okay, councilmember Royce? Councilmember Grisilli?
I don't know.
Do you have a motion then?
Move the direct staff to initiate the steps to increase fees from 5 to 10%?
Effective?
Effective 2009.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
If there's no further discussion, Christine?
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
May I have those?
Yes.
9C, we will move on to item number 9C. Well, Mr. Moore, welcome.
Thank you, mayor and members of council. Item 9C, this is a clarification of council policy. In the past, what we have done whenever we have had a Prop 218 hearing, we have always included that notice in the next quarterly billing, and we've done that to save on the cost of notifying the public. The cost of notifying the public is roughly 45 cents a household, or in the neighborhood of, staff estimates about $6,000. So normally what we would do is we would hold a Prop 218 hearing for the organic food scrap program on November, send it out with a November 1 bill. That would mean that 45 days out, you would have the hearing in January, and then because Allied Waste has indicated they would like at least 90 days, and actually, last week we met with them, and they indicated it might be as long as 120 days, that would move the program all the way to April. Staff felt, given the direction we got from you at the last meeting, that was probably not the way to go. The council direction, I thought, was rather clear, that you wanted us to move as quickly as possible. So with that in mind, we're proposing a different scenario to you tonight, and that is to spend the $6,000, to move the noticing up, to send it out literally in the next week or two. That would shorten all the timelines, so we could have the Prop 218 hearing as early as October, October 27th meeting is what we were projecting, and that would mean that if the council did not receive a majority protest on the night of October 27th, we could send the notice to proceed Allied the very next day, and we could have a program up and running probably in January, February, saving you a couple months. So that's really the, the policy decision here, and I recognize that we don't normally bring to you policy decisions about $6,000 often, but because this is never, we've never moved it up before, we thought it's worth at least kicking around that concept with you to see if you're comfortable moving it up. Again, it seemed from your direction last time, you, you wanted to move quickly, and this certainly would get you there.
Thank you. Questions for staff, council?
Mr. Mayor, I guess at the previous meeting, we had talked about trying to move this as quickly as we possibly could, hopefully in, hopefully in time for the holiday season, and it sort of looks downhill in a hurricane, we're not going to be able to get there, so I would still try to move as rapidly as we can, I'd be in favor of moving forward.
Any questions for staff? Great, thank you very much, Mr. Moore. If there's no further discussion or motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the expenditure and send out the notice.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
If I had been here, I would...
We can't go back that far.
I know, I know.
Yeah, no, this is actually very specific, it's a long meeting.
Yeah. The, if we're going to do this program, I think we need some education on it. I don't, I just don't think it's going to be used that much unless there is a lot of education on it, and my concern, if we move too quickly, is when we have the opportunity to do that. I don't, I don't think Allied is planning on doing any kind of...
Sorry, just to, not to argue, but education is a huge part of our discussion, and it's a key component, and one of the reasons that I think some of us wanted to move it up, to move it up was so that education starts sooner rather than later. So, I mean, education is an enormous component.
Where's that coming from?
It comes from Allied in the proposal.
It does.
Mr. Mayor?
I didn't think I liked the spending anything.
Yeah.
It's part of the $2.66.
Yeah, yeah, it's in, it's in the, it's in the proposal there. I mean, education was a primary part of the discussion.
Education will go...
You're absolutely right. It's going to take education to make this program work.
So if we can't get this done before the holidays, if that was part of the push, what's, why, what's the interest in spending $6,000 to get it going in February versus April?
It's two months where we'll be better citizens.
Mr. Mayor, I think I can make this an easier decision. I really, to initiate your, your Prop 218 properly, you've got to have the notice with the rates and the increase in rates before you, and you approve that by resolution. Those are not contained here, I think Brian was just looking for direction, and we'll have to bring that back to you anyway. So it's, I'm not sure if you, you can't just spend $6,000 and send it out tomorrow, okay? And I'm not sure we're going to have any, I'm not sure what the meeting schedule is, but we'll bring it at the very next meeting, and if that's going to be very close to the first November meeting, or November 1st, we just assume to do it November 1st and save $6,000. It's a matter of saving about a month's worth of time. You follow?
I, I believe I follow, four weeks is different than, you know, a couple of months, so is that, so, but what you're saying is we can't really act on what we've got to do.
You have to have the, the actual Prop 218 notice that says, we are approving the, these rates, and then it becomes a protest hearing, and 45-day notice goes out, and the public has a right to protest that increase in rates. So you don't have, whatever the rates would be increased by this diversion program. I'm not sure we, we actually know what those rates would be, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's been fully calculated.
I, I thought we did.
Well, it's, 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 the rates, the rate impact has been calculated, but it sounds like we don't have the appropriate format attached here, so I, I think the city attorney's suggesting it, it may be a moot point if there's no September meeting, right?
It's a technical glitch, staff neglected to put the 218 process actually before you, so we simply are precluded from taking action on it tonight as we, as the option is outlined within the staff report. So we need to come back with the actual notice, as the city attorney has advised, and we won't be able to do that until the next meeting. So it looks as though November 1st is the quickest that we can act in any event. We are, you know, regret the inconvenience of, of that, but it's a faux pas on the staff at this point.
Okay, then we're going to disregard this item?
I'll just express, Mr. Mayor, that this has been an item that, you know, we just went through 9A, which was talking about the fact that we wanted to increase our diversion rate, and we've got a gun to our head from the state, and this is a program that we've got citizens screaming at us for, and we're dragging our feet, it's damned annoying, so there's nothing we can do, but I guess we'll just have to hurry up and wait.
We're going to move on to item number 10A. Mr. Maltby?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, I'm sorry, I don't have any more recycling or garbage issues to present to you this evening. This issue before you tonight, staff is recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to appoint an ad hoc council committee to work with staff to develop a three-year financial sustainability plan and review the city's budget practices for potential changes that could be recommended back to the full body of the city council. The current strategic plan has a six-month objective, asking staff to develop a three-year financial sustainability plan. This recommendation is trying to move that particular objective forward. We believe that there are some complicating factors right now that we'd like input from the council on as we develop that plan, as regards to not only the fact that the city has, over the last three years, cut $2.5 million last year from the budget, $800,000 the year before, another $2.5 million the year prior to that, but also the fact that the city may be considering a tax measure in November. So there are three primary issues that we would, that we would be looking at having the subcommittee address. That includes how to proceed in terms of the interim during the next year before a measure can be considered by the voters, what would a plan look like if a measure was passed, what would a financial plan look like if a measure was not put before the voters or failed. Those would be the primary concerns. In addition, we've heard a number of comments from new council members and the existing council about the city's current budget process, and we'd like to get some feedback and some involvement there.
Thank you, Mr. Maltby, I appreciate staff being open to and bringing the issue for the council, because I think councils express a lot of interest in something like this. So I'm going to assume for discussion's sake, although chime in, that council's in support of, of having this committee. Is there anybody that's, like to counter that? General, I was going to move to the next step of talking about who we should appoint.
Oh, okay.
So if, if, if we're moving past part one into part two, that we might, we can move into part two, and then if anybody would like to talk about their particular interest that hasn't already talked to me about it?
I guess before you, you get into that, I would, I did some thinking about this, no... I guess before you get into that, I would, I did some thinking about this, knowing it was gonna be on the agenda, and even with my, you know, the position that I've taken on our, on our budget process, which, by the way, I just want to say, the two new council members are not the first to recognize that something is a little amiss and needs some better ways of reporting to us and so forth. I think we've all felt that and said something about it at one point or another as we've come onto council, because it's, you know, when you first come onto council, you see it, and you, you can't believe that this is the process you have to go through, and we've all voiced this. I think what the difference is this time is, A, perhaps the financial position we're in, and B, that we've gotten two new council members to say it in stereo, and it has somehow resonated this time. So applaud you guys for getting us here. The thing that I thought about, though, is, is the need to tune in with our city treasurer. He sees how the money gets spent all the time and has, you know, a grasp of our finances as well. He's also an elected person, and so I would see an advantage to bring him onto this committee as, as a city treasurer, as an elected person, and it gives us a chance to get another voice of a, of a, the people's representative in this process. So that's the only thing I would add to it, is that we could have him on it as well.
Council?
I agree with Mr. Grocott's point about the city treasurer, and this is something I've been looking forward to and would offer my services to the mayor if he would like to appoint me.
Mr. Grisilli?
You're interested in it also? If the mayor feels that, as you go on it, I'll go on it, whatever, and Mr. Galvin sent us an email, and I know Mr. Galvin for many, many years, I respect his opinion. I'm glad he, he sent us the email to make sure that we're all on, on the right page on this, and that would be part of any motion that I would have, to make sure that he's included in this.
Okay. And I also like to voice, I'm also interested, and will try to do as good of a job, best a job I can, if appointed.
Through the chair, and again, I'm not, would never assume anything, but if next year, if things work a different way, I might, there might be a different position than I'm sitting in this day. It's, I don't know if that's the appropriate spot for me to be on a subcommittee, or if other, you know, because it's gonna roll into next year a part of it. So I just, you know, I just, I'm not running away from the responsibility, I'd be happy to be ad hoc member of the ad hoc committee or something, but I'm not sure that would, that would work out.
Within my purview and horizon, I see all of that.
Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Grisilli, thank you. So anyway, in order to move forward, I, I would propose that we, that Councilmember Royce and Councilmember Ramad make up the ad hoc subcommittee, and along with the city treasurer, Mike Galvin, on that ad hoc committee. And I don't know if we need a motion for that or not.
Sounds as if there's consensus that the council will be reflected in the minutes.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 10B.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. At 9:38, we get to talk about the California Electrical Code, my favorite topics.
I'm sure by 9:40, we'll be done with this, right?
Hopefully. Our, under new business, it's simply a consideration of introducing an ordinance to amend the current code to simply allow what's called ROMEX, otherwise known as NMC cable, in commercial structures per the California Electrical Code. And currently, we don't allow it. I believe it's a carryover amendment from a prior, either prior building officials or a carryover from a prior agency, so I'm not exactly sure where it came from. But what it benefits is, what it would benefit would be, say, like the Harmony yogurt-type tenant improvements, where they, typical wood frame construction, where they can come in and use ROMEX at a lesser cost than, say, metal clad, MC-type cable, which is slightly more costly than ROMEX. And the California Electrical Code has its own built-in limitations for ROMEX with respect to, you know, you wouldn't see it in the Nectar-type buildings, or, you know, Best Buy, or San Carlos Marketplace-type buildings. So like I said, it has its own built-in limitations, and I think it's a, but removing the, staff considered that by removing this ordinance, it'd be a little more of a user-friendly approach. One other item is that it would be, it would help clean up the ordinance. It also is in keeping with a more of a streamlined version of code adoption with fewer amendments per agencies. Belmont has adopted the California Electrical Code with no changes whatsoever. And their building official, Mark Knolfi, he's a electrical code instructor at College of San Mateo, so I consulted with him. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for staff? You have no concerns with the proposed amendment?
One more time?
You have no concerns with this proposal?
I don't. Great, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, move to introduce ordinance number-
Thank you, Mr. Valley.
1402.
Ordinance amendment in the city of San Carlos, municipal code deleting section 15.04.050, subsection D, regarding non-metallic sheathed cable.
Second.
Steve?
Councilmember Ramad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, we are going to adjourn to closed session. That's that. Thank you very much.